Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 6, 2012 meeting of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Member Bennett?
Here.
Member Brendel?
Here.
Member Sprague?
Here.
Member Swenson?
Here.
The first matter before us this evening is the approval of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to approve the format for the meeting agenda?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, we approve the form of the meeting agenda. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. Next is the adoption of the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing nothing. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So.
Moved in second, and we adopt the consent agenda. Items four A through K. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. And now, we are on to...
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I missed an opportunity. I would like to ask the council to consider the addition of two items to tonight's agenda. Both of them are in the pile in front of you. One of them is Resolution 2012-46, and this is a resolution regarding the proposed closure of the Southdale Courthouse. That is something that is kind of a timely issue for us. Another issue that was jacketed with the salmon is Resolution 2012-47. This is an item concerning the width of an easement connecting the parking ramp to Jerry's Hardware. This is an action that the council previously approved, but now they are seeking a little bit wider easement, and if it's your gracious to schedule this at the end of the meeting, they would appreciate it. Can I can explain it in a little more detail, then?
I would make a motion to add those two items at the end of the meeting. I'll second.
All right. There's been a motion to second to add Resolutions 2012-46 and 47 to the end of Section 8 of the agenda. Under reports and recommendations, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. All right. Now, we are on chief to the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda, and you have a resolution that you want to discuss with the council.
Manager Neil also asked me to bring along one of our paramount firefighters. This is Mike Krygnus, a paramount firefighter for the fire department. And this resolution tonight would authorize us to accept a federal grant for new personal protective equipment, which would include what Mike's got on. We call them the bunker pants, the boots, the jacket. He's got a thermal hood, gloves, and helmet, and then the self-contained breathing apparatus that he's going to put on. We received a grant for two years ago in 2010 to purchase. And so, our current equipment is substandard for today's technology. It doesn't meet current requirements, and the grant is for $74,000. Excuse me. Right here.
Seventy-four thousand five hundred.
Seven-four thousand five hundred and two hundred, and we would be required to put together a 10 percent match of eighty-two eighty for that. So, we're requesting that you approve this grant, and we would purchase new equipment. It would not be for all of our firefighters, but a vast majority of our firefighters. Some of our firefighters have new equipment, would not be replaced, but this would be our example of some of the older equipment that would be replaced. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the equipment or the grant.
All right. So, just to be clear, that what you're asking for is assistance in the filing of a resolution authorizing the fire department to accept a FEMA Fire Act grant. The amount of that would be seventy-four thousand five twenty. There's a 10 percent, minimum 10 percent matching responsibility. That's $8,280 that the city would have to provide.
Correct.
Those matching funds.
The project cost is eighty-two thousand eight hundred, and so, our 10 percent grant match is $8,280. And then, the FEMA would pay seventy-four thousand five hundred and twenty dollars.
Okay. All right. Questions for the chief? Is there a motion?
I will make a motion that we authorize Resolution 2012-45.
Second.
Moved in second that we adopt Resolution 2012-45 authorizing the fire department to accept a FEMA Fire Act grant. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Just a little bit more information. This is designed to take withstand extreme temperatures. There's also some thermal barriers. It actually looks rather simple, but it's actually a very complex piece of equipment, and it's definitely there to protect our firefighters and allows them to go in deeper and hotter than they would in the past and be able to do a little bit more work and potentially provide more rescues as well. So, we really appreciate your support of the fire department and allowing us to accept this grant.
Sounds like quite a return on our investment in many ways.
Yes, thank you very much.
Chief, just out of curiosity, what is the temperature resistance of that suit?
It depends on what area of the equipment you are, but there's some areas that will around 500 up to 700 degrees. The rooms can get up to about 8,000 or 9,000 degrees up high, so we have to get down low. So, for example, the...
The math?
This part here will melt first, and that gives you a sign that you're getting pretty hot. And so, some areas start to fail first, and it's designed to fail first, actually.
Better than the canary.
Yeah, so.
And you had in a demonstration at 3:00 today on the new tower?
That's correct. At the South Metro Public Safety Training Facility, we opened up our sixth-floor burner that we approved last fall, last summer, somewhere around there. I don't recall the time. And that's up and operational now, and the media was out there covering the event today. And I've not seen the video, but I heard it's pretty impressive. But thank you for supporting us in that way as well. So, it's the only fire tower, I'm told, in the whole United States that's as high as it is and with that new technology there. So, we accept, or hope to get a lot of rental revenue from it as well. So, thank you very much.
Very good. Thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next portion of the agenda is the public hearing section. We have three public hearings this evening. The first matter is a conditional use permit and lot width variance request involving property owned by St. Peter's Lutheran Church on France Avenue, actually Fuller Street. It's a 15-foot lot variance request. And Ms. Zocker, you have this matter, obviously?
Mr. Mayor and City Council, the subject property is located at 5421 and 3717 Fuller Street. The property is the St. Peter's Church site, as highlighted. It is just east of France Avenue and south of West 54th Street.
Can you folks hear in the back of the room? Can you hear okay? All right. Thank you.
The property includes the church, as you can see, just east of France Avenue. There is a parking lot. Then, east of the church, there are two vacant lots, east of the parking lot, north of Fuller. And the church also has a parking lot south of Fuller and three additional lots, even though 3713 isn't highlighted, that is also owned by the church. They own two vacant lots and a lot adjacent to the parking lot that currently has a home built on it. In August of 2011, the church received a 15-foot lot width variance for the vacant lot that they own at 3713 Fuller, which is the lot adjacent to the lot in question. And that particular lot is not encumbered by a proof-of-parking agreement, so it can be sold by the church for development. The planning commission approved a variance in August to allow for that. The church is back in front of, or it's in front of the council this evening in order to allow the release and sale of an additional lot at 3717, which requires a lot width variance similar to the lot width variance that was granted to the adjacent property. The minimum lot width required is 75 feet. The lot that's in question is 60 feet in width. It meets all other dimensional requirements. There is a home that's being planned for that site, as well as the site that's adjacent to the east. It meets all of the height, setback, coverage requirements of the zoning ordinance, as does the proposed home that's to the east. Both of the homes are pre-sold to families that would like to move into them. This is the existing condition of the property, showing the church with the parking lot to the south, as well as the vacant lots adjacent to it, parking lot to the east of the church, as well as the vacant lots east of that. All of the church property, with the exception of 3700 Fuller, which is the vacant lot next to Drew, and 3713, are encumbered by a proof-of-parking agreement that was put in place in 1983, providing an ultimate build-out plan for the south lot. And that was as a result of a church expansion in 1983. They had to demonstrate that they could provide additional parking if needed. This is the proof-of-parking plan that is tied to the agreement that is currently in place, that the church is seeking to have released from. And as you can see, it does incorporate the 3721 lot that currently has a house on it and the 3717 lot, the lot in question. This is a new proof-of-parking agreement plan that the church would like the council to approve as part of a conditional use permit amendment, along with the variance. It does provide the required parking. Actually, in 1990, the church had a reduction in the number of seats inside of the church. There was a remodeling, so actually, the parking calculations were reduced from 156 to 131 stalls. The proof-of-parking plan does not change the parking lot that is adjacent to the church to the east, but it would improve the parking to the south for a total of 132 stalls, so they would have one extra stall above and beyond the requirements. SRF Consulting Group has indicated that the average weekly parking demand is much lower, however. It's approximately 73 stalls, and there are 91 stalls combined on both the north and south lots provided by the church. It isn't anticipated that the south lot will need any improvement in the near future, given that the current lower demand and the reduced attendance is indicated in the SRF study. No additional parking has been required since 1983 when the agreement was put in place, so exercising that parking agreement has never been considered at this point. The request requires a conditional use permit to amend the proof-of-parking agreement for St. Peter's Lutheran Church at 5401 France Avenue and a 15-foot lot width variance for 3717 Fuller. Primary issues is a proof-of-parking agreement reasonable for this site and is the proposed variance justified. Will the proposal relieve practical difficulties that prevent a reasonable use from complying with the ordinance's requirements? Staff believes the proposed variance is reasonable. The lot was developed with a single-family home originally. It has been demonstrated that a new home may be built within the current standards required by the city. The practical difficulty is that the width requirement for the lots has changed since the time that the lot was subdivided. Are there circumstances that are unique to the property, not common to every similarly-zoned property, that are not self-created? The lot was subdivided prior to the church's ownership and at a time when 60-foot lot widths were acceptable. Lots within the surrounding neighborhood provide similar widths and do not require variances for construction. The variance would allow construction on the property with a new conforming single-family home, similar to the homes nearby. Will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? The proposed improvements would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The modification to the proof-of-parking plan and the lot width variance would allow the opportunity for a home to be built on an existing platted lot, consistent with the other single-dwelling units within the neighborhood. The sale of the lot will not affect the status of the church property or ability in the future to provide the required parking if needed. Staff recommends that the city council approve the conditional use permit to modify the 1983 proof-of-parking agreement and a lot width variance for 3717 Fuller Street. Approval is based on the following findings: that the proposal meets the conditional use permit conditions as per Section 850.04 of the Edina City Ordinance; the proposal meets all applicable zoning ordinance requirements; the revised proof-of-parking plan allows the release of 3717 Fuller Street from the 1983 proof-of-parking, allowing the church opportunity for an alternative option for use of the property. With the exception of the variance requested, the proposal would meet the required standards and ordinances within the R1 dwelling unit zoning district. The proposal would meet the required standings for variance because the proposed use of the property is reasonable, as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The request is reasonable, given that the home had occupied the lot in the past. The lot width of the subject property is consistent and similar to those near it. The proposal is in harmony with the intent of the ordinance, since it will allow replacement of a home that had occupied the lot and was originally subdivided for that purpose. The unique circumstances are that the property is not needed for future parking demands. Of the church, however, may not be sold for redevelopment without the benefit of the variance. Approval of the subject should be subject to the following condition of recording a revised proof-of-parking agreement with the attached parking plan by SRF Consulting Group dated January 17, 2012, with Hennepin County, and execution of a proof-of-parking agreement. And with that, I will stop and answer questions.
Member Swenson?
Ms. Zocker, didn't there used to be a nursery school in this church, and is there still one?
I believe there's still a nursery school and a school in the church. They're not operated during the weekends when the church has their church services.
Okay. So, when the study was done, a parking study, was it done only on a Sunday when there were church services, or it was done as a period of time?
It was, they considered all of the uses that were within the church.
Okay. So, the uses haven't changed since that study was done?
Since the study that was done for this conditional use permit, no. Not that I'm aware of.
Right. And were there ever any other uses that were more before that weren't existing at the time of the study?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Member Sprague?
To follow up on Member Swenson's question, so, as I understand it, the type of uses are you've got the Sunday service, you've got the weekday daycare, and you've got a youth religious education group.
Correct.
And the peak service is for the Sunday service. The daycare is more pick-up, drop-off. They're not stationary parking their cars.
Correct.
And the youth education is not a peak service either?
Correct.
More dropped off, and then they come pick up?
Right. The use is on the weekend.
We're concerned about Sunday service. And I see on Figure four, they've, in Figure three and four, they've tracked the attendance going back all the way, so it's clear the trend lines have decreased. There's a few peak events I know, looks like they've noted here, Easter and Pastor Miller's 100th birthday. That was a big event.
Yes.
But at the peak, even at the birthday party, you're talking about 200 for total attendance, so still within the ordinance guidelines. That would meet the parking requirement?
Right. Yes, it would.
All right. Thanks.
Just to reinforce that notion, I've had a few meetings over there during the week, and it seems like it is indeed a place for folks that have their kids in school or daycare come park, bring them in, drop them off, and then leave, and there's not much occupancy involved with respect to the parking lot there. Member Brendel?
Couple things. I spoke with the pastor at this church today, and my question to him was, is this the last lot, last parcel that could be sold of the parcels that are owned by the church? And he agreed that it will be the last one that is sold. The two that are east of the church are empty at this point, other than possibly, I think, if I'm thinking of the right location, there's a playset, there's an outdoor playset on one of those lots, which during the time that the church school daycare is open, that is used by the school, but it's also used by the neighborhood, heavily used by the neighborhood. They consider it their neighborhood park, and the church does love that. So, it is a busy place as far as kids and having access to that play area, whether they have school in session or whether it's a weekend. But I am in support of this. This is, like Pastor Shockey said, it's the last parcel that they are going to treat this way, and they'll expand their parking into 3721 as planned, but that's, and the house on 3721 is condemned, is it not?
I don't believe it's condemned. It is, I believe it's currently vacant.
Oh, it's just currently vacant?
It's just vacant.
All right. All right. Thank you.
But can I clear something up? They may not intend to sell them, but they can sell them should they choose to, correct?
They would then need variances, and they probably have to go through the proof-of-parking.
Right. But those two lots don't have proof-of-parking on them?
Oh, north of Fuller? Correct. But they would need lot width variances in order to...
They wouldn't.
Yes.
But there, and are all of these lots that we're talking about, the one that's up tonight and the two that we're just talking about, they're all separate lots on the tax rolls, correct?
I believe so.
Okay. So, they've already been platted? They're not, they haven't been combined into the church, and they're separating them out? They're all separate now on the tax rolls?
Correct.
Okay.
Member Bennett?
Thank you. I noted that in the correspondence between SRF, which had performed the traffic study and parking study, and City Planner Carrie Teague, there was reference to the site plan with the first iteration of the traffic study, showing a future addition to the church. And since that is not the subject of discussion, I request that that be removed, but just in terms of any influence that that could have, any impact that could have on future parking needs. Is there an addition contemplated, and if so, what would that be likely to add in terms of traffic and parking?
I can't answer the question whether they intend to add on, although they did show that plan originally, which we questioned. Obviously, they would then have to increase the number of parking stalls, and this proof-of-parking agreement wouldn't cover an addition, so they would have to come back, demonstrate that they could provide that additional parking in order to accommodate any sort of addition. I mean, the more planned they lose, the less opportunity they have for providing parking if they ever want to add on.
So, in other words, just to reiterate, it would be a part of the examination and decision-making for that application?
Correct. They'd have to go through the whole process again.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Zocker?
Just to clarify that last point, they have one stall to spare under the current plan, so they would definitely need to do some revising and some thinking before they came back.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And what was the determination of the planning commission with regard to this matter?
They approved it unanimously.
All right. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on behalf of this matter from the church as a proponent or the developer who proposes the building of the two houses on the property? Yes, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jim Ravel. I'm currently the congregational president at St. Peter's Lutheran Church. Pleased to be here this evening, mostly just to answer...
Your address, Mr. Ravel?
I live at 3832 Upton Avenue South in Minneapolis.
Thank you.
I would be pleased to answer any questions that you have. I would like to clarify a couple points that were discussed to verify that, yes, we have no intention of selling any of the additional lots that we own at this point. We need, we feel the lots that we have for future plans for the church, and so, we are not contemplating at this point selling additional property. We do operate a early childhood center and a Christian day school, and those were contemplated in the parking study, and the comment that our peak period is Sunday morning, that is correct, so there should not be any conflict there. With that, I would answer any questions that the council or the mayor has.
You're on the council, I have a question for Mr. Ravel at this point in time. All right. Member Sprague?
Did you have a chance to look at the chart that showed the, you know, average attendance, chronologically?
Yes, I did.
Are there any other peak events not captured in there in terms of...
No, that's very accurate, so.
Okay. So, the apex of attendance was that birthday party event? That was the big...
It was a big day.
Okay. Thank you.
Maybe I would clarify just the point of the addition that was just discussed. We have no current plans for an addition to the building. That drawing that we submitted as a preliminary drawing was, you know, a potential idea, and the only addition to the building was just a remodel of our east entrance, so it wasn't adding any real square footage in terms of, you know, where people would sit or anything like that, was creating a little bit more lobby space. But we do understand that any future additions to the building would have to take into contemplation any effect on parking.
Thanks, Mr. Ravel.
Thank you.
Anyone else on behalf of the applicant? All right. This is a public hearing. I'm going to open this matter up now as a public hearing. If you remember from Ms. Benarott's comments at the beginning of the meeting this evening, you'll have three minutes. You will see a yellow caution light go on when you have 30 seconds left, and our council is strict about time enforcement, so we will cut you off at the three-minute mark, so use your time well. We welcome you to come up. If you have anything you want to use from a projection basis, you can use the center podium and then get a handheld microphone. Otherwise, I would suggest using one of the side podiums, and make sure you give us your name and address when you come forward. Hearing no one requesting to speak and seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, we close the public hearing. Discussion. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried.
I have some questions on the house.
Sure.
Is the builder here? I think you sent all of us a really great article on the need for small houses on lots. Can you compare what you're proposing to build, which I think the words were consistent with other single-family homes in the neighborhood, in your plan here, to perchance what I just received this week, which is a fascinating article, and I appreciated it. Thank you. But I don't see a correlation with that article you sent me and the size of this house that you're proposing on this lot or the size of this house in relationship to the neighbors.
The home that is before you is a home that was custom...
Identify yourself, please.
Jeff Shane Wetter, JMS Custom Homes. Address is 5250 West 74th Street, Edina. Answering the question, this home was designed for a family that is elected to make this home, this location, their home, with, of course, your approval this evening. The home meets all design requirements of the city codes and ordinances and falls short of maximizing the potential for this site in both hardcover, square footage, area, and setbacks. We preserved a very large rear yard for this particular plan. I don't recall the exact square footage, but you have the plan in front of you.
No, I don't have it, unfortunately. I left it at home. I actually have it in my file of things to save, so...
Thank you.
I wasn't thinking...
But I think the reassuring part is, JMS Custom Homes is very focused on providing high-quality, smaller, custom homes to our clients here in Edina. I would suspect that this year, we will produce somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 new homes for the community, and all those homes will be less than $1 million. So, we're building new construction in Edina that's relatively small and relatively affordable. So, I hope that answers your question, but the key answer is, this home is not too big.
No, I know. It's just that it's a three-car garage home in a two-car garage, sometimes one-car garage neighborhood, and it's certainly taller and different than almost every other house in the neighborhood as far as mass goes.
From elevation and height perspective, it would be very similar and not taller than the three other new homes that are immediately to the east.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It looked like it might be about 3,500 square feet?
Yeah, I would guess between 3 and 35 is approximately correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
I have a question, then, for our planning department, Ms. Zocker. How do we set the elevation of this house for front door... elevation of this house for front door threshold? We're not taking anything off of the lot. So how do you remind me again how the rule goes for where they're going to be able to start their first floor?
Well, this is considered a vacant lot, so it's not under the same rules of.
No.
If you remove a house, then.
Right.
You have to be one foot above what's, was existing there. They can, I guess, set their first floor elevation where they wish. It isn't, they're not changing the grade on the property, so.
It's an existing.
Yeah, it's existing grade.
So should they choose to, because there's no, nothing I see here that shows me what's going to happen with the, with the elevation. They could put in, I'm going to pick a ridiculous number, fourteen-foot basement ceilings, and then start the house should they choose, and the house could start three, four, or five feet above grade at the threshold.
Well, what, what.
Correct? Although then you'd have a driveway that would be really steep and that probably wouldn't make sense.
What they would be held to, though, is their maximum height of thirty-five feet, and that's measured from existing grade. So what happens then if they want fourteen-foot ceilings?
Okay.
They start squishing that opportunity for what'll happen in the top floors.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good, thank you. Other questions or comments for Ms. Zocker? Do we have a motion with regard to this matter?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Further discussion? We need a rule call. Ms. Mangan?
Number Brenda?
Aye.
Number Swenson?
Aye.
Number Swenson?
Aye.
Number Bennett?
Aye.
Mayor Toma?
Aye. And please welcome the new families to Edina for us. We're happy to have them here.
Thank you very much.
The next matter before us, from a public hearing standpoint, I think Chris Zocker has as well, in the absence of Director Teague, and this is a proposed rezoning from PCD four to PUD at sixty-nine ninety-six France Avenue. The old Sinclair Station, I guess it's not old yet, it's still sitting there, but empty. Ms. Zocker.
City council members, the subject property is located in the northwest corner of France Avenue and West Seventieth Street, as highlighted. It is the old Sinclair Station. This is a view looking at the station from West Seventieth Street and then now also from France Avenue. This is the property directly to the north, the office building to the north, the property directly west of the subject property, and then also the property south of, across West Seventieth, which is also a gas station. FE seventy LLC is proposing to tear down the existing gas station at sixty-nine ninety-six France Avenue and rebuild a eight thousand two hundred and sixty-square-foot office retail building, as indicated in this elevation. The building would include three thousand square feet of retail store, which would be the Vitamin Shop, and five thousand two hundred and sixty square feet for a financial office that would include mezzanine area as part of that square footage. To accommodate this proposal, redevelopment of the request requires final rezoning from PCD four, planned commercial district, PUD, planned unit development, a zoning ordinance amendment that establishes the PUD zoning district, and final development plan. The council approved the preliminary rezoning from PCD four to planned commercial district to PUD and planned unit development and preliminary development plan of the project on December sixth, twenty-eleven. On February eighth, twenty-twelve, the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the request for the final rezoning, final development plan, subject to conditions in the planning commission staff report, and they added the following conditions to that motion: that a photometric lighting plan be submitted that details illumination levels sufficient to support an active pedestrian movement along France Avenue, that snow will be removed from the site at the point where stored snow consumes one parking space, submit a revised site plan that indicates location of bicycle storage, submit an internal truck movement circulation plan, that plan would be then subject to the review by the city engineer, revise the building plans to address the loss of articulation of the pedestrian entrances from France Avenue, West Seventieth Street, and also submit a more definitive color rendering of the proposed building, including finishes. The color renderings must be revised to add the changes made to the pedestrian entryways in the street. These conditions have been added to the resolution in the council packet. The applicant has submitted the requested plans to address those conditions. This shows the site plan with the bike rack. This is the truck movement plan that would be reviewed by the city engineer. These are the new elevations that were being proposed, and then the renderings of the building as being proposed this evening. The building has been shifted two feet to the west and one foot to the north in order to avoid the traffic signal at the corner, as you see right here, which actually helps the pedestrian area in front of the building. It, it allows for a little bit deeper walkway. The footprint of the building and the parking arrangement has not changed from the preliminary rezoning or from the, the shift of the building. The revisions have been reviewed by staff and found to be acceptable. The ordinance has been amended to reflect these changes. There's some alternate views of the building. Primary issue is the PUD appropriate and is the development reasonable. Staff believes the PUD is appropriate and the development is reasonable for the following reasons. The proposal is consistent with the approved preliminary rezoning and preliminary development plan. The site layout would be an improvement over a site layout required by standard zoning. The building is brought up to the street, provides front door entrances, allows sidewalks to encourage a more pedestrian-friendly environment along the street. The design of the building is of high-quality stone and large windows. The development would incorporate improved landscape and green space and decrease impervious coverage and an infiltration area. The contaminated soils on the site would be clean. The traffic would be improved in the area with the right-in, only access on France Avenue, the elimination of the curb cut nearest the intersection, and narrowing the curb cut further to the west. The proposed land uses are consistent with the comprehensive plan. The proposed project would meet the following goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, including building placement and design, movement patterns, appropriate parking standards, infill redevelopment that optimizes use of city infrastructure, and that the, and it will complement the neighborhood corridor context and character. Staff recommends that the city council approve the final rezoning from the PCD four planned commercial district, PUD, planned unit development district, and file development plan to construct an eight thousand two hundred and sixty-square-foot retail office building. This is the PUD language that would be adopted for the zoning district that clarifies the uses allowed on the site and ties the PUD to the approved plans. The ordinance has been modified slightly because the, the building did move a little bit because of that light that was in the way on the corner. Staff recommends that the council approve it. Approval shall be subject to the following conditions. Subject to staff approval, the site must be developed and maintained in substantial conformance with the following plans: site plan, grading plan, and landscape plan, date stamped March second, twenty-twelve; lighting plan, date stamped February twenty-fourth, twenty-twelve; utility plan and bicycle storage plan, date stamped March second, twenty-twelve; building elevations, date stamped March first and second, twenty-twelve; building materials board, including colors that may be presented at the city council meeting this evening; prior to the issuance of a building permit, the following must be submitted: a final landscape plan, subject to staff approval; additionally, a performance bond or letter of credit or cash deposit must be submitted for one and one-half times the cost of the amount of the required landscaping, screening, and erosion control measures; a construction management plan; the property owner is also responsible for replacing any required landscaping that dies; submit a copy of the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District permit. The city may require revisions to the approved plans to meet the district requirements; compliance with the conditions required by the chief building official and his memo dated January tenth, twenty-twelve; compliance with the conditions required by the city engineer and his memo dated February third, twenty-twelve; compliance with conditions required by the fire marshal and his memo dated January twenty-eighth, twenty-twelve; the contaminated soils must be cleaned up as per the requirements of the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, and finally, adoption and compliance with the PUD ordinance for the site. And with that, I will stop and answer questions.
Questions for Ms. Zocker at this point in time? Member Swenson?
You know, we ended up with a rendering in July, that was done in July. We saw it later, but, and we talked about this project and we based it on that. And I find that rendering very different in feel and look than this particular building. So my question to you, and actually, the original rendering, I, there's a copy of it in the packet, so I can give it to you if you want to show it. Yeah, I would have put that up for an award for Minnesota Architectural Design Award. It's beautiful. You know, the answer that was given the planning commission is why it doesn't look like that anymore is that the person who wanted to rent that had a sign that had to go up. That can't be the only answer, and so I have a, I have this question. So if we, we do a PUD and we look at sketch review and we really like something, and then what comes in becomes an, like, there isn't a good name but half-sister. I, I find that really upsetting and uncomfortable is to be able to then say, well, gee, this is okay. I guess I'll have to vote on it. So how do you, we have other things in our process that that, when that doesn't happen, but the sketch review maybe, and would you consider this the sketch review step? And therefore, when we said yes, then they can do whatever they want, because I'm not feeling like we have any ability in expectations when it changes like that. And I really know that a lot of the discussion we had that night when we got that original drawing was that it was a significant piece of architecture on a corner that was going to change the landscape and the way that changed. I see Mary nodding and, so help me through the process of how did we get here and why am I not feeling so great about it?
Well, you are looking at the original sketch plan that was given to everybody to, to look at. The plans that were then submitted for preliminary were different than this plan, and the planning commission did make comments about that.
Now, watch the meeting. So I know what their comments were.
Right. And so there have been adjustments made to it. One of the, the planning commissioners have reviewed, Carrie Teague, the planning director, did have Michael Schroeder, who actually made the motion and had some of the conditions put on, look at the new updated plans. So they were.
So you mean, the plan that I see tonight is better than what the planning commission saw?
Yes, it's a different rendering.
Because there's a, I see a bike rack rendering was added and minor detail.
And if I might, I, I just want to clarify that we not only saw the rendering dated July twenty-second, two thousand eleven, for sketch plan review at both the planning commission and council level last summer, but that's actually part of the basis of the approval that the council gave it on December sixth.
Mm-hmm.
That, that rendering appeared again in that packet for December sixth. So what we're seeing tonight is really with this packet, the first time we've ever seen it. And I understand that with its date of March first, two thousand twelve, it, I guess incorporates what the planning commission suggested, but I, I agree, it's a huge departure from what was given preliminary approval.
It looks like the major change was the allocation of that space in the corner to more signage and hard space and less window, that, that corner detail, and then the soffit.
I'm also wondering how many, I, I look at these two drawings, I think there are windows on the, that were appearing in the stone, looking at the twenty-second. I invite a comparison, but it looks like we've actually, that there are windows gone that were previously in the design. It also would appear, and I would welcome correction, that some of the windows are no longer actually functional, two-way glass windows, but maybe window look-alikes. And then the windows that were previously shown on that southeast corner of the building appear to be gone altogether and replaced with a signage. So yes, the, the addition of the signage changes it, but also the.
And there's some material changes.
The facade is less stone.
Mm-hmm.
Well, if we're going to talk in detail about the comparison between these two buildings, the other thing I noticed, and maybe it's an illusion of just the angle of the drawing, but the, the height of the corner of the July twentieth, two thousand eleven, looks to be higher than the rendering of the March first, twenty-twelve. That looks like a flatter roof to me, and that was my first impression, was, hmm, that's not nearly as dramatic as the corner that I remember. So, so that's, that was, that was my initial reaction, is it almost looks like any other building now, which is not a fair statement because neither of the, those two, those two roof lines admittedly are angled, but it's not as dramatic as it was before. And, and I, I personally don't like the sign at all. I think it cheapens the building. And if, if you're going to put sign on that building, I'm, I'm kind of thinking of the signage on the Galleria, everything's letters. And I, I would rather see something that's lettered here rather than a blue and yellow sign on a stone and glass building. So that, I mean, that's one of my comments. I have some others. I'll save for later.
Well, we've got a sign ordinance, and that gives us the parameters of what we can work in in terms of doing design. But nonetheless, I think Member Swenson's question was an interesting one, and that is, when you approve, and we're, we're fresh into this PUD process, when you approve in December on a preliminary basis, the July twenty-second, two thousand eleven rendering with certain conditions attached, and now at final, you see a substantially different building, what are the, what are the abilities or, what are the abilities of the council with respect to this, this project and, and the, and the changes that are made in terms of either, either requiring the construction of the building that was preliminary approved or, or denying the construction of the building that's submitted for final approval?
Well, PUD does allow for that flexibility. It's up to the discretion of the council to decide what's appropriate for that district because they are creating that zoning district.
Does, does our legal counsel have an opinion?
Always. The sketch plan is just that. It's a sketch plan. They have the right to bring something in that deviates from the sketch plan, and you would anticipate that they would. If, if you didn't anticipate that, you wouldn't have a multi-step process. So the question today is, is this meet your standards? You're not bound one way or the other by your prior sketch.
It was approved, it's not only the sketch plan approval, it was also the approval of the preliminary design, was the same rendering.
But nothing is done until you take action to rezone the property and adopt the ordinance. And you, and that's what's before you tonight.
I, I note that on the planning commission staff report dated, what says meeting date, February eighth, twenty-twelve, on page four, it says building slash building material. The proposal is for a stone building with large windows. See rendering on pages A fifteen through A sixteen, which is the rendering that was presented in sketch plan review. The applicant will have a materials board and so on. These, the city's chief building official has reviewed the plans and provided comments. These comments and conditions shall be made a condition of approval.
Mayor, if I could just make a comment, I don't want to suggest, and just throw out an idea. If you have concerns with the building and the design, and that's your If you have concerns with the building and the design, and that's your decision, obviously, I don't... It's probably not possible to redesign a building tonight. So you may want to consider this. Listen to the applicant, hold the public hearing, close the public hearing, make your comments, and then table this matter for a couple of weeks and then for the... I don't know if you... I don't know how fast it takes to turn something around. And so to bring back something that's responsive to your concerns.
Thank you. Other questions for Ms. Hocker? The proponent, you want to come forward? And I think because we're new into this PUD process, we might give you in the range of 10 to 15 minutes to explain what happened here.
Dean DeVolus, 5009 Ridge Road. Edina... Oh, sorry. Dean DeVolus, Edina, Minnesota, 5009 Ridge Road. And I'll walk through the process in detail. And what council needs to know, when a building puts together, there's multiple forces that shape it. Architects' wish, developers' requirements, city council, and tenant wishes. And all those have to align and come together because parts of the building improved in terms of council looks, in terms of what Ameritrade was willing to do by their tenant... The vitamin shop is much more conservative, so you work with all those aspects to try to put a project together and try to come out with the best combination. And so I'll walk through the presentation that has. But the building has not substantially changed, except for a few aspects, as I point out, like the roof is still the same original angle as rendered. That has not changed. They have been improved in terms of the street scrape and landscaping. Some glass was lost on the southeast corner due to the requirements of the tenant. On the other hand, TD Ameritrade, we added considerably more glass because we added the mezzanine in that part, improved also. So in working through all these aspects, you try to meet the tenants' wishes in the building and try to keep to the original sketch as close as possible. But remember, when the sketch started, there was no tenants in hand. The tenants come in, and reality starts coming to the building, and you try to keep that original vision and goal in place. So I'm going to walk through a piece of this just to go through the discussion. And the whole time, we did work with staff. There was no blatant switch because the drawings you see here were submitted. What we did not do was submit a new rendering, but the elevations were submitted at the previous planning commissions. The planning commission did review this building extensively in detail, and we did work with staff extensively on a lot of fine details through this building. So it's not like, here it is, surprise, this is what it is. This has been pretty well broadcast previous to this council meeting. So I'll start right here in terms of site plan improvements, which is not within the sketch. And the idea is that what we have done is increasing the amount of landscaping around the perimeter and defined entries to the street, which did not exist before in the previous sketch or previous design. So obviously, as you mentioned, incorporation of bike racks, landscaping, defined sidewalks, a low retaining wall, stone wall, which better gives a feel of fitting access and definition of the street side of the building, and along with the landscaping, which helps refine the site. So what you have is a very highly detailed front corner with all those aspects to give that street scale, streetscape elements. And I'll show that a little bit in that signage. And I drew this one for the purpose of showing signage. Under the present Edina ordinance, we're allowed 300 square feet of signage on this elevation. We've used up 50. So we're... Whatever ratio it is below the signage ordinance. We could do... We could double the signage on this thing by three times and still sit within Edina ordinance. So we're very... And this shows a sign of the vitamin shop here, and this shows a sign of the Ameritrade. That's it for signage on the building. So we've curtailed it as fiercely as possible and still made them tenants attempt to work. So this, I really believe, is a good compromise in terms of signage in a relationship to the front of the building and that look in that aspect. This, and I showed in black and white first. Now, the perspective shows that this elevation's accurate, the perspective just starts it a little bit. And again, we kept the glass all through here. We kept the stone materials, which is the same ratio below. The glass up here is always lost because this tenant did not wish for the second-story glass, period. That was their requirement, and that's where we were at. They wanted their standard size, their standard height, their standard store, their standard element. But we did add the entry definitions, the low retaining wall, the landscaping, the stone, which is the same ratio as the original sketch, and those components. We have the streetscape definition. On the other side of the building, which is the... Looking from the other corners, this is looking north to south, we gain a whole much more glass and stone with Ameritrade. So we tried to balance where we could with the tenants and take it. So here we have the glass and stuff. And looking at the other way, we kept those landscape elements and all those components to work with it, and the angle of the roof, which is the same as the sketches. So you still have a very strong, dramatic building with the same elements, the same components, the same idea that occurs within it. Obviously, the piece that was lost was a bit up here because that's where the tenant reality met the building. But on the other hand, this side gained a lot more glass. So it's push or pulling between where you can incorporate, where you can't, and trying to satisfy multiple needs as the building comes together. All the glass is real on the building. There is no... I don't know who mentioned fake glass or something like that. So it's all through glazing. It's through windows, so to speak, on this, including this assembly here. We were able to work in the glass with the corner tenant, you know, to try to push this. And that was working with staff. The element you see here with the stone and the angle, which is original with the perspective and the same as the project. This, again, you saw this rendering before, is...
Is it real stone or full stone, Mr. DeVolus?
It is real stone on that. So it's the same as City Hall with the camera, with that type of stone. It's a national type of stone. So the percentage of stone is the same on the building as before in the rendering. This is... And I have the sample here, and I'll get to that last. So you know, what was lost in here. But remember, the fact is, I'm at 50 square footage of signage versus 300 square foot, which is under the ordinance. So we held it back. So the real stone still exists here, the stone, the glass, the stone retaining wall along the bottom, and all those aspects that keep at the canopy and all those pieces. So it still has the same quality material. The one change is I've lost some glass here, I gained glass here. I did lose the one opening here due to the corner tenant. So that thing occurs. But as tenants come to a building, they evolve. It's just the nature because now they start putting the requirements onto the architecture. And I have latitude with some tenants, and I don't have as much latitude with other tenants, and I got to work back and forth to it because there's one rule about a building. You got to design a great building, got to make sure you get tenants in it too, because that's the work economically and aesthetically, and you got to balance both sides of that ledger to make sure this works. Otherwise, we would fail on all fronts. And again, I show this because this is the colors. You know, I want to show it without the color and with the color. And then this drawing here shows a building, again, on the TD Ameritrade side with additional glass and opening. So again, this is looking from the north side of the building, looking towards the south on France Avenue. And then this is finally the rear elevation, looking from the back parking lot towards the southeast. Materials, back to your real stone question. I need two hands for this. And also, I'll show this to... I'll just put it here, and then I'll stand up to refer. The building is of three major materials. The real stone, the darker metal panel, which makes up the accents, and the lighter metal panel, it makes up the by of the building, and then glass. So that's what is clear, storefront glass to give the maximum transparency of the building. So that's basically... So essentially, this building is all what I call class one materials, stone, metal, and glass. There is no dryvit, there is no stucco, there is no hardy plank on any aspect of the building. All four sides are first-rate quality. So it's really a four-sided building. So that's a basic process. But like I say, you work as hard as you can to keep the vision, but you have to work with the tenants too to make sure it's leasable. And you push back. And you say there was gains in some areas and some losses, but overall, I believe that the building has maintained the general quality that was presented from day one. Just that now that you get tenants in here, you push and pull those aspects to make the building work. So I stand for questions. Thank you.
Members Sprague.
Thank you, Mayor. So I understand you have to balance economic viability and aesthetics. Is it your professional opinion that it would not be economically viable as a retail space if the front facade were turned back to the original plan?
The issue is... Here, let me go... Let me get this elevation up. And here's where... The vitamin shop did not want the volume above, period. They did not want to have a glass and that option up above. And so they were strict in terms of that situation and not the glass. So economically, they would not be willing to work in a space that had the double volume. So the windows above would have just been looking into an attic. They wanted their ceiling height fixed, and that was the rule. So in terms of your answer, yes, this tenant would not be economically viable. They would not accept the space as presented with the volume.
Members Swenson?
Sorry.
I understand what you're saying and why the windows are gone, but I look at it two ways. I think the vitamin shop is great, I'm glad they're a tenant, but things don't always last forever with tenants. And once you take that vitamin shop and change it into something else, I still have a very dark corner, I think, based on your... And the stone is gone that originally was up there to break it up. So I have big metal planks in the corner with no windows and maybe another sign from another store. But you know, if Ameritrade, I suppose, was on that corner and the vitamin shop was on the other, it would look different.
If I had my wish, I could flip them.
Yeah. But you understand... And I'm giving you an incredible compliment. I would love to put you up for a design for this particular design in the yearly design review because that is gorgeous. And I understand your conflict with your tenant, but you understand I'm looking at this building 10, 15, 20 years from now, when it may not be a vitamin shop, but I still have a very dark corner without windows and without any breakup of the stone that was on the original one. And it's a significant corner. So how do we balance that with your tenant?
Well, here's, in terms of the structure, the building is designed in the future that it could be all glass. So it does have that capability, meaning this should preclude the glass from showing up 10 years from now or five years from now.
Control-wise, if it were windows, nothing would prevent it from going back to panels in the future.
Correct, correct. And the problem is, and I weigh this, looking at my corner, the problem is I would have had a void up there with duckwork and stuff because the vitamin shop had that ceiling plane fixed. So then I get to frit glass, which is sort of a fake glass. And I thought that was sort of odd in its own right. So I sort of said, I chose the option of doing true windows for true views, for true use, as opposed to what council member called fake windows, and went for that option because, you know, the tenant didn't care for the volume, and I couldn't get them to go there. So that's why...
And the lack of the stone completing around that corner from one rendering, no, not there in this one.
Well, if I do the stone in there, it makes it harder to put the glass. I mean, they had a bit of a stone band, a lower part, but it gives... I lose the flexibility with the stone. If I had the glass from day one, I could have worked it. So that's why it dropped out because I did keep... Let me get back to... Let me go to the black and white because that's a little easier. You know, what I kept was the stone base, the full glass corner, the stone here, the stone here. This is a little bit right here, but stone behind the sign doesn't make sense either. And what I hope is that I want to keep the flexibility that could evolve depending on the future tenant. So that's a piece that was dropped out where I had a bit of stone up in this area. But the angles of the roof, the height, the volumes, all those aspects from original rendering are still there.
No, I see that.
I didn't compromise on that piece.
No, I know that.
What is the material that is under the sign?
Yeah, the same as...
It's a metal.
So give me good upper body strength. It is this material right here.
It's kind of light gray.
Right there.
It's a metallic, it's a metal.
It's a metallic. It's a quality...
And the darker one is the trim on the windows?
Darker one's all the trim on the windows and the roof soffits because I want to get a differentiation between the planes. And so the idea is that, as you look right here, the darker emphasizes the roof angles and those aspects. It's all the window shade elements. And then the lighter material is the wall surfaces. So there's a contrasting too, and then that's finally accentured by the stone. It's just they got the other stone and the two metals, and then the glass, the clear glass is the fourth element as far as the building.
And I was the person who raised the question about the glass, but from the rendering that was included in our packet, what you just depicted made it clear that that's true glazing. What was in our packet did not show in the same way at all. And so it was, I think, a valid question to ask, given what the renderers showed.
You know, Mr. DeVolus, in a sense, and Member Swenson alluded to it, you might be a victim of your own skills. This building that you showed up here with tonight for final approval is a lot better than the Sinclair gas station that's there, but it's a pale imitation, at least for us, of the July 22 rendering. And what we're thinking about is the fact that with a PUD, are the tenants driving the design from our standpoint? Or are we going to try to elevate everything from the old zoning? We're using PUD to elevate everything along with it, including the design. So I think Member Sprague raised an interesting question. Let's say that we approve this building tonight. You came in with this drawing. Ms. Hocker, once this building is in place, if vitamin shop came along three years from now and said, "Close up those windows and remodel that upstairs area and put in metal siding so we can take advantage of that square footage up there," can they do that without coming back to us? Is that just a remodel, or do they have to come back to us and get that approval?
It would be a PUD amendment.
Be a PUD amendment. Okay. So that's one of the interesting questions for me as we kind of enter the world of PUD is, does this council have to let tenants see drive design like you do? Or are we going to make design drive the PUD? Or use the PUD to drive design, and you have to get tenants to fit the design?
That's the tough question because there's two ways to look at this. So it is, you could do that, but on the other hand, where the fear is, do you make it un-leasable? Do you make it difficult to lease? Because these tenants came forward, and so where do you find that balance in terms of space? You know, TD, Ameritrade wanted the volume, wanted the glass. Others don't. And tenants come in many forms, as you know, on that. So that's where it get really difficult. I mean, let's say we put the glass in, play this out, it'd still be the sign in the corner. So you know, so let's just go through the exercise, what would happen? Let me get to this elevation. Hang on a second. Oh, I buried it. So let's play this out. Let's say we assume we do the glass. We would still have the sign because that's a requirement. I can't negotiate on that. The glass back here would be false, meaning it's an attic. So we could do...
It would be like the blue glass on Walgreens at 49th and 1/2 Street. But it wouldn't be blue.
Yes, it wouldn't be blue, but it'd be false glass or frit glass. So that element could stay still same there. So essentially, what would happen, to play this out, is that this corner would be detailed like you see here coming all the way across, but the sign would still be implanted on top of the glass. The void space above would be unfortunately just a void space. In other words, you'd be looking up into the attic above the vitamin shop because they did not want to move on their ceiling. For whatever reason, they had set their ceiling height, and that's what they work with. Some tenants are open to architecture, some are. So this could be modified with glass. It would be a false glass, but that could be the possibility. I chose the route of, I'm not throwing a false glass for the sake of, it's sort of dumb because it's just an exposed attic. And that's the choice I took on this project.
What about adding stone, not just the half, but the entire panel in stone and then mounting the signs on top of that?
I didn't like too much stone. It was an aesthetic decision of, if you've seen an all-stone house, sometimes it comes off very heavy. And I just don't want to, if you use too much stone, it cheapens it. And it was really aesthetic decision that if I made this all stone across all aspects, I would sort of lose the effect of stone because of the fact we was in real stone. And then you just lay it all over, it sort of cheapens it. And you've seen that effect. When you take out, even the city hall, there's aspects of metal, stone, and glass, you know, the whole building's not stone because it, it just softens the look. You know, I just want to mix with metal. And the other reality is, it's sin behind a sign. So I'm sort of throwing it away in effect. It doesn't really do me any good in that area. And remember, I took the signage down, I don't know what percentage, from 300 feet to 50 feet, to try to make this work and try to hold the aesthetics, you know? So that was a battle of its own right.
Well, I think the sign...
Comment, so I would not recommend stoning because then it could be too much of a good thing. It would lose the flexibility.
Well, I think the problem is, the problem is your signage is ruining your aesthetics.
Right.
I know. And that's...
That's the plain truth of it. And so the question that comes up, and Member Brindle touched on it, in a PUD, Ms. Acker, can we drive the signage requirements as well or is that underlying sign ordinance of ours going to be what we're required to follow?
It's their branding. Well, currently, the ordinance that is being proposed would be the PCD-1 zoning district, which is probably the lowest amount of signage. It's, I think, 15% of the wall area, but...
We're overlaying basically a new PUD zone.
Right. So you have the option to change.
So if we're overlaying a new PUD zone in this district, why can't we also direct what signage is permissible?
You certainly could. It was just suggested at the PCD-1 district signage requirement.
Should we go and get some input on the public hearing part and then come back to discussion? Would that work okay with you, Mr. Mayor?
Sure. And I can come back, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to open this up for a public hearing. If there's any, if anyone in the audience wishes to come forward and testify or inquire regarding this matter, you'll have three minutes. Seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Submove to second.
Move to the second, and we close the public hearing discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Curried. Back to, you want Mr. DeVos back up here again?
No, I was just discussing it. I think, you know, I guess I would like to see, I don't want tenancy to drive my decision. I understand the economic realities, but I'd like to see some further options, you know? Maybe it's playing with the signage, maybe it's playing with the material, but I don't feel comfortable without looking at some other options and approving this. So I would move to table this per council's recommendation.
Member Bennett?
I would support that. When we had the discussion...
Do you have a second first?
I will second it.
Thank you.
When we discussed this initially and discussed it again in December and approved the preliminary design, much attention was paid and reference made both by Mr. DeVos and by council members to how this would relate to the rest of the area. Galleria sits across the way, directly across France Avenue. There is a use of stone and glass with that building. And this building was embraced, the original design, because of its tie-in visually to the area, that it was a bridge of this area across France. And this is the most, the corner that has been most substantially changed, the corner of the building, is also the most visible corner. It's really the one that more people are going to see. And I appreciate the efforts that Mr. DeVos has made to add more glass to another part of the building. It will be aesthetically pleasing, but it won't be seen by as many people. It isn't as public as the corner that's had the design change in the other direction. And then finally, I just, as we as a council have struggled with what constitutes a substantive change, this would, I think, definitely fall within that category of something that would go back through a process because of the type and percentage of change.
Can we just, I don't mean to interrupt you. Where are we on a date countdown? Because to table it, I think we may potentially need Mr. DeVos's permission depending on where we are. So can we at least get a clarity on that? And then I'll stand down so Member Brindle can speak.
May 1st, 2012 is the deadline for city decision.
Member Brindle?
I just have a question of another kind, and that has to do with, in moving the building to the north and the west, it infringes on the parking lot. And so truck movement, deliveries...
The footy puts an aspect on it.
Okay, so you're still fine?
Yeah, we're still good on that aspect.
Okay.
One thing in terms of the motion that's being discussed, I'm assuming we can be back for, for council in two weeks. And I'll show you the idea since I have your attention right here, what I may do is a compromise to make this work. The thought is, and I'll draw right on this plan because the thought may be to take this line right here, make this glass that would mimic the other corner, knowing, but I'm going to be upfront, knowing that this glass here, you know, is false glass in the space. But the idea that the signage would come down here a little bit lower because I still need the signage, still doing it with tenants, there's still a reality. So, you know, you can't escape that part of the puzzle. So essentially, the idea is that this component up here could be glass, but it is, again, false glass that we're dealing with. And so essentially, the detail would be similar to the Ameritrade setup that you see here, except the glass you see above would be glass for looking attic space, but the same idea that gives some similarity. I can't change the tenant in terms of what their requirement, but I could maybe work on a compromise, which I keep the same pane of glass and it would come down here to give that same aesthetic as this far corner and then the signage worked down there. That's probably what I'd come back with. Beyond that, I will end up losing my tenant, even this will be a bit of work. So essentially, the other corner will have a similar aesthetic to this, and so I'll have that kind of activity to it. But I can't make a tenant want the volume. I can't make them take the two-story space. But I could at least give the presence of the aesthetic to sort of preserve what you see on this corner, which seems acceptable versus this corner on that. I still need to work with the signage in the area and corporate logos and that kind of stuff, you know? There's going to be some compromise needed, but the basic idea is that I could do this kind of effect which mimics this corner, which I think really will hold the original tent in place and still allow me to keep my tenancy intact also. Because remember, I'm working with two masters or multiple masters on this thing. And so you've seen some cities that push it so far, sites become unbuildable, Minneapolis being an example, where they pushed it so far, they're still waiting for the right tenant. This, I think, may be a good compromise for council in terms of keeping integrity. So essentially, your view would be similar to this. Obviously, it would stop over here, but the same basic idea. That's the approach I'd like to come back with in two weeks if it's tabled.
You, if you're going to come back and you need to bring us a color rendering, I would recommend that the rendering work better than this one that looks like there's no differentiation between the color of the metal and the trim and also that there really aren't windows in the corner. They really look like dark metal squares. Because part of what, part of the reason that these differ so much in looks is that this has that painterly quality where the coloration is good. And this has that CAD drawing quality.
Here, and I agree.
Where you pantone pick something that didn't come out right for your siding, and it's not reading. And I see windows, and apparently there are windows where it looks like paneling.
Is all, yeah.
Right. But, and so for us to visually say, "Okay, you got close enough and it'll work," I think your rendering has to be better.
Hand render. So those are two, and that's...
And I'm saying you have to hand render it, but you just have to get the CAD machine to print it like...
You can't get CAD machines to put light. Hand rendering does express it. The reason I did CAD was to show reality without the artistic, call it, the reality to it. What I'll come back with is this in black and white because that sort of shows what it is because you can discern that easy, plus the hand rendering of this corner. The rest of it, I'm going to keep exactly the same. So the only change is going to be here and here, with the signage adjusted and it'll be rendered so you can see the color. Will be the basic idea what will happen on this.
Member Bennett?
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. Mr. DeVos, one question that I don't think you have answered is that your original, and again, what was approved as on a preliminary basis, December 6th, had the eyebrow that now continues around the corner, the southeast corner of the building, was broken. And there was eyebrow facing France Avenue, there was eyebrow facing 70th Street, and the windows on that lower floor actually extended above or into the space now occupied by eyebrow. Your eyebrow, the eyebrow on the building is now continuous, and so there's not only been a loss of the other glass, there's also been a loss of that additional glass rounding the corner.
Could you put that rendering up? Because I don't have it with me right now to see what you're referring to. Thank you.
The old one?
Oh, there's one right there.
And particularly if what your tenant, do you see what I'm talking about?
No. Because this, this glass is...
No, first floor.
Okay.
It's the eyebrow compared to...
The overhang.
This overhang here...
I like the eyebrow.
Yeah, actually, I got more glass here than, let me see if I can pull it next so you get it on the camera. There's actually more glass here than here because the glass runs continuous all the way around the corner.
No, I think what she's talking about, though, is the eyebrow or the overhang that goes over where the door is and then stops, and then you have the bank of windows going around the corner, and then it starts up again. So can you follow that line with your pen?
I'm following this.
Yep.
This glass here.
Go left, go left.
You do a glass with the overhang.
It's the part, the overhang above the glass, not the overhang.
It's back on the corner. It's on the corner right there because, yes, the, it is a nice architect, continue left.
Okay, what you're referring to is a break of it.
Yeah.
Why did I do that? Because I have a floor that runs through that now. I mean, a ceiling. Originally, if I had a two-story volume, what you're saying, this made sense. When my tenant came in and said, "We want a ceiling at that point," my glass would be looking at the edge of a ceiling. So I had to change this two-story emphasis out, and that's where I lost this full story because I had a single-story tenant in a two-story space. That's why the sun was broken. If the glass continued, it had to be faucet or fake glass because the view would be looking at a laying ceiling. That's, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
It looks like a good, continuing the overhang is, I understand, a good solution. But what I was trying to convey, the point that I was making is, that is part of what adds to the heaviness compared to what was originally presented. What you originally presented had that balance of mass with the stone and the lighting of the glass.
It kind of was soaring.
Yeah, it really was soaring with the angle of the roof.
I lost a bit of the soaring due to, I had a tenant that didn't like to soar.
I would say more than a bit.
Yeah, and that's what happened.
Yeah, we don't mean to redesign your building, but we're trying to be as honest as we can. And I, as I think the mayor said, you did such a great job the first two times with the rendering that you kind of blew us away.
If there was a way you get the tenant to compromise with, but I can't make promises I can't keep until I speak with them. This one, I know I could keep in terms of what I sketched here, so I don't want to say come back and then keep coming back over and over again.
But you mentioned something that's important, and you were going to come back with the corner in black and white. I think you better come back with a corner in color.
Oh, I will, both. I'll come back with both.
He's going to, he's going to do the black and white in CAD. He's going to do the color as a hand rendering.
Those are the two elements you'll come back with. No reason to black and white because you can see pure what's there, so you understand it. And then the rendering is for color and aesthetic and those components. So that's the two things I can come back with.
I would also like to see an option with the stone coming through the face now that it's not all the way into the, from the top to the bottom. It's broken up by the false windows. I'd like to see the band that was in the original rendering come back in at that corner. It'd be above the eyebrow. The signage can go on it because you're shifting the signage down, although it blocks some of the stone. To Joni's point about that being the real face of the building. So maybe that's not the option we go with, but it'd be nice to see that option rendered.
I'll try it to sort of oasis stone, but I'll put it in there because it's really, what's weird is the stone will appear floating, which is a little bit odd above glass. It's sort of a aesthetic thing. I know what you're asking, but I wouldn't probably recommend it because aesthetically it'll look like fake stone because it just floats above glass. It's not tied to the ground.
That will make the decision easier if it looks bad.
That's what I'm doing. That's what I'm telling you right now.
And I don't want to speak for anyone else, but for me, part of the attraction of PUD is that ability to be more flexible for developers, but then also have public benefit obtained from it. And to me, if we don't have that balance, we're out of whack with it. We don't have what we are seeking.
I think it's a pretty good balance here. I get the corner, but, you know, again, you've just balanced the public input, council, and economic reality, you know, all those way into the combination. So you got, you got to play with all three of them and find that balance on all those aspects, so.
We appreciate your flexibility.
And don't forget to shrink up the signage a little bit.
He might not be able to, that's...
Well, we've got the authority to do it.
I know, I know. I, okay.
Options, options.
Would you like to vote on the motion?
All right. Any other discussion on the motion to table for two weeks? All right. All those in favor of tabling this matter until March 20th, 2012, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay? Curried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more public hearing this evening, and Director Hul is getting set up for it. I just want to comment that, these are all my emails from the, from the past couple of weeks, and we appreciate this, you know? We greatly appreciate it. This was a very fine example of staff work and public input and United Transportation Commission work. They did some yeoman's work on this project. I think met for an hour and a half, got a lot of input from you folks. I could tell from the way they voted that they weren't settled amongst themselves on entirely every issue either. They had some consensus on some issues, but just really want to compliment everybody on the, on the high level of discourse, whether it was by email or phone calls. It was a terrific sort of endeavor. So we're going to, we're going to have a public hearing now about the proposed improvement on Tracy Avenue from Vernon to Benton. And chapter two, Benton to Crotown is another day. But today, we're going to talk about what staff is proposing and what the ETC proposes and have a good discussion about it and take some public testimony along the way. So, right, Director Hul.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. Today, we have the public hearing for the Tracy Avenue project, which is improvement number BA 368. I'll be handing it over to our consultant. I worked on the project in a minute. But from an engineering perspective, I have to say that we feel that this project is necessary, cost-effective, and feasible. And Andy will, will get into the details of the project in a second. The, the reason why we're before you as a public hearing, this is a 429 project that 20% of the project costs are being assessable underneath the state statutes 429. So with that, I'm going to introduce Andy Palman. Andy's been working on the project. He's a project manager with WSB and Associates. We also have Chuck Rickert here tonight also with WSB that, once we get to the questions and answers section, Chuck can also step in on some of these items also. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Andy, and Andy can go through a quick presentation on, on the project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Good evening, Mayor and council members. So let's go quickly kind of through our, our presentation here.
Mr. Palman, would you introduce yourself and give us your business address?
Absolutely. Andy Palman, 701 Zinnia Avenue South, Suite 300, Minneapolis, Minnesota, 55416 is the WSB and Associates address. WSB and Associates address.
Thank you.
Yep. So while this is a project location, I'm sure many of you are aware of. It's basically from Benton Avenue to Vernon Avenue. So some of the existing conditions, 36-foot face-to-face roadway width, and that's a face of curb to face of curb. Concrete was placed back in 1961, and the pavement has deteriorated to a point that any kind of rehabilitation or anything is kind of out of the question at this point. There are parking constraints. There's only parking allowed on the east side right now. There are no bicycle accommodations at this point that currently exist on the road. The pedestrians, there's only a sidewalk on the east side. And then another component of the project is the overlapping intersection at the intersection of Tracy and Benton. So here kind of is a layout of our proposed improvements. So a couple of the items here is, we propose enhanced parking lane on the east side. Also, we maintain the sidewalk on the east side. And then two five-foot bike lanes along the corridor. And then the roundabout at Tracy and Benton. So here's basically a typical section showing what we propose. And this is a recommendation of the Edina Transportation Commission, staff, and the consultant. So as you can see, we have 60 feet of total right-of-way width. And the 40-foot section, so we'd be widening by four feet. And we'd be maintaining the existing sidewalk for the most part. All right, so another aspect of the corridor improvements is that we put some enhancements. They're called parking lane bumpouts. And they'd be placed at the major intersections of Grove Street, Walden, Hawk's Drive, and Hawk's Terrace. So one of the advantages that we think of, of the bumpouts is the narrowing roadway width. So as you're going down the corridor, you're going to see the actual curb coming at you. And it's been kind of proven to be kind of a calming measure. Improved pedestrian visibility at the side street crossings. So the point here is if people do park or come from their residences on the west side of the street, that they would have access to the sidewalk. And if they're crossing back over, they'd be more visible to oncoming traffic and that sort of thing. It also creates a shorter crossing distance for pedestrians. And overall, it does reduce the cost rather than having a full paved area that is now bumpout area. If we had pavement, there would be more expensive. So we looked at Tracy Avenue and Benton Avenue intersection. So what we have here is an overlapping intersection, about 70 feet, center-to-center offset. And it's controlled by one all-way stop for all, all the legs there. So what we've, what we've identified is that it has efficiency and operational issues in terms of, especially when school gets out and that sort of thing. It has potential safety issues. And it also has bus turn issues that we observed. So we came up with the roundabout option, and this is the staff and consultant recommended alternative. And the Edina Transportation Commission recommended leaving the intersection as-is without realigning the legs. So here's some of the roundabout advantages. Safety, roundabouts throughout the nation have, and other areas of the world, have vehicular and pedestrian safety benefits. Reduced footprint and cost. We also took, took a look at the possibly realigning the west leg. And in addition to be more, more expensive, it also took more land from the school as well. And it also does allow the Benton legs to be offset, kind of maintain their offset without having to really alter that too much. Roundabouts offer traffic calming measures. One of the things that we got from the questionnaire was that, you know, speed was a factor. And roundabouts have been known to kind of, you know, break things up and kind of just calm the environment. It does resolve the bus turning issues. So instead of like cutting across the lanes like it currently does in a lot of situations, this allows the buses to meander around the roundabout without impacting other vehicles. Has a U-turn capabilities. We notice this when a lot of parents will pick up their children in that parking bay that's facing southbound. And if they're coming from Crosstown, they'll come up and they'll actually make a U-turn in, in the lane and then park in the, in the parking lane to pick up their child. The roundabout would actually allow them to make this maneuver legally and be positioned correctly. So it's increased efficiency and reduces emissions. Overall, just the functionality of a roundabout compared to the existing four-way intersection, four-way stop condition would increase the efficiency, get people through the intersection without near misses and that sort of thing. And just due to the, the general flowing nature of the roundabout, it does, has proven to reduce emissions and reduce fuel consumption as well. And also, it can be used as an enhanced aesthetics or gateway to the community. So the area of Tracy, it can almost act like, somewhat like Seventieth Street. That roundabout will probably act as a gateway to kind of the overall feel of the neighborhood. Locked here for some reason. I think that was, I have a couple more slides. Sorry about that. Okay, sorry about that. Try to get through here. Okay, so overall, this is a summary of the project costs. So as you can see, the state aid portion, about $651,000 for the roadway and roundabout. And we'd be specially assessing $141,400. And then we also have $495,000 in utility costs for a total project cost of about $1.287 million. So here's kind of a, the alternatives considered and the kind of associated cost. So the leap-as-is is the far-left version. That cost is about $100,000. So assessing 20% of that would be $20,000. And that's what we, we propose assessing for these intersection improvements, no matter what, and the rest would be covered by state aid funds. The second option is a roundabout, about $165,000. And again, the assessable cost is $20,000. Councilmember Brindle had the alternative that you see third to the left, which is kind of, it has two one-way streets, basically, just aligning the one movement there. And that cost is about $225,000. And again, assessable cost $20,000. And then finally, the west leg realignment is about $238,000. So here's an assessment map showing who would be assessed what. The one-third REU is shown in yellow, one REU is shown in green, and then we have the school property as well. The cost for REU that we have right now is $1,284.85. Overall, this is the schedule of the items that we had during, so far, and what we'd have remaining in terms of final plans and that sort of thing. So with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Questions for Mr. Plowman? Member Sprague, and then we'll go from there.
Mr. Plowman, a couple of questions. Tell me about, you talked about traffic calming. How does the roundabout experience impact a driver going through that corridor visually versus the condition it exists today?
Okay, well, basically, going through the area today, what you see is, as you're coming up, a straight road. Yes, you see it vertically changing and that sort of thing, but you see a straight road. What roundabouts often do, and it's a term that I believe comes from architecture, is terminate the vista, which means that as you're approaching it, you see landscaping, you see, you can't see the curb going through and that sort of thing. And what this has proven to do is, is, is kind of calm things down. I know something is ahead of me. I have to slow down. I have to, you know, meander through this intersection. So that's kind of the calming measures that roundabouts offer.
So it heightens the awareness of the driver, is what you're saying?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Tell me about the impact of the narrower travel lanes. And can you distinguish between the travel lane and the width of the road, so it's clear?
Of the roundabout or of the overall corner?
You're talking about the, just the roadway section.
Okay.
Because we're expanding the footprint of the road. But the travel lanes are being reduced. And how does that impact a driver?
Correct. So basically, currently, there is a centerline stripe at halfway through at 18 feet, which is not correct in the feasibility report. But there's no other stripes in terms of the parking or the shoulder. So really, you have the full width of that 18 feet right now. We propose 11 feet. So basically, we have a bike lane, you know, we'll have striping on the bike lane, and we'll have the concrete gutter pan on the west side. So the overall width does increase, however, the, the lane of travel is cut down to 11 feet. And that constriction, again, is, is kind of a calming measure in terms of, you feel kind of that side friction of something near you that you don't have all sorts of area to travel.
So you've got the visual cue of the striping. What about the bumpouts?
Correct. The bumpouts kind of create, again, kind of that, that visual friction. So anytime that you're driving along and you feel constriction coming about either from curb or, you know, striping or anything, it feels like everything's constricting a bit, and it, it's often proven to be calming measure as well.
Okay. I'm going to cede, and then I want to come back to the bicycling aspect, but I'd like to cede to my fellow councilmembers.
Thank you. Ms. Swans.
What input has the school had on their bus egress and exit as it pertains to the choices? You gave us those pictures going across. Leave it the same, which I picked up a child for the last three years there and dropped him off. So I can tell you that the buses don't always make it and stay in the street when they turn the corners. Roundabout, a realignment, and then the, I call it the porkchopper, or member Brindle's design. If they had input, because they would be losing land on three out of those four choices.
Yeah, well, when we spoke with them, Wayne might want to chime in here.
Councilmember Swenson and Council, so we've, we have worked with the school district, fell along on this project, and we've asked them for input. And, and the input that we got back is that their buses do work fine at this intersection. And that's really, it's, it's actually in your packet, and this current packet is, is what their comments back to us regarding the operation.
So you haven't had any new comments since those comments?
Just those comments, exactly, yep.
How often do you see a school crossing at a four-way stop that goes right through the middle of a four-way stop?
Once, say, repeat that if you could.
Well, it's a four-way stop, basically. It's an offset four-way stop.
Yes.
And the school cross, crossing basically goes, well, if it was a diagonal, it isn't, but it would, in essence, it goes through the middle. It doesn't go from a curb to a curb to drop two curbs. It goes straight across the street, but it stops four cars all at once there. I mean, they're really, there maybe could be one turn. But it's, it's a very unusual school crossing, and it's great when you have adults out there with the little kids with their flags. However, if you're going back for soccer practice an hour or two later, there isn't anyone with flags there. So we have no flashing lights. We have no, so if we were to leave the intersection as-is, is there a way that you would recommend that we can make this crossing safer?
For the crossing, just for everybody, basically from Benton all the way across?
Well, the majority of the, of the kids trying to get across are crossing across Tracy.
Correct, yeah. So you're talking mostly...
From the east to the west, or the west to the east.
Okay, so mostly about pedestrian crossing. Well, how would we enhance that? Well, I think we'd add the, the pedestrian sign that shows, you know, where they're supposed to cross. We enhance the crosswalks as well, you know, and just in general, I mean...
I mean, we do, we do use those flashing, the flashing ones. Have we ever used it in this kind of instance before?
We haven't, we've, we've, we actually have warrants for, for the different, when we, when we put in the flashing or when we put in crosswalks and such. And this one, more, we haven't ran the warrants through, but I wouldn't think that it would meet the warrant for a flashing. However, what we're proposing, if you leave it as-is, is that we would do bumpouts similar to what we did on Concord. So it actually, so you're reducing the width that the child has to cross the roadway. So on the parking on the east side where you have the eight feet, so you're coming in eight feet, so that's eight feet less of somebody having to cross, cross the roadway.
Okay, but you really don't think it would meet warrants for a flashing light?
I don't believe it would, but we can, you can always direct us to, if you order the project tonight, you can direct us to run that analysis and see if it, if it does meet it.
And then I know I saw this in the report, but I didn't hear you give it in your talk, is that with the proposed widening of Tracy in the other part, not the intersection, the additional width has to come from the west because there's a sewer pipe that runs at the edge of the road on the east. Is that my...
Yeah, the, the existing stormwater trunk line runs on the east side of the road. And we probably want to maintain most of that to cut down on price and that sort of thing. There are additional reasons for widening to the west as well, just maintaining the boulevard width on the east side, not reconstructing a lot of the sidewalk on the east side. There's quite, there's 13 feet of right-of-way on the west side. So those are some of the reasons.
Okay. The sidewalk on the right side, though, that needs to be reconstructed, you would reconstruct.
Yeah, anything that's deficient or not ADA.
There are some deficient areas in that sidewalk. They aren't as bad as the street, but...
Correct, yeah. We, we try to make it be similar to Seventieth Street with correcting the areas that are deficient and, and not ADA compliant.
Okay, I'll stand down.
What was the width on that sidewalk proposed? Was it four or five?
Five feet on the sidewalk, the same as existing.
Thank you. Member Brindle.
I have a couple of questions, and then I'll listen to the public hearing. And I'm going to make some comparisons in two of these to what we did on Seventieth Street. On Seventieth Street, correct me if I'm wrong, but we did not special assess for the roundabout. Is that correct?
Correct.
That was not assessed? Okay.
We, we assessed for what we would have put in the, in street right there in asphalt.
Oh.
As if it was the same way.
As if it were straight through. Okay, do we have the same option with this?
That's what we're proposing here, yeah. That $20,000 is that $100,000 option of carrying it through and then 20%.
All right, great. Also, on Seventieth Street, we sought a variance to narrow the traffic lanes to 10 feet. And as I recall, we got that variance.
It was actually a variance for the parking lane from 10 to 8.
Was it?
10-foot was what was required because of stated based on the volume. And we asked for a variance to reduce it down to 8 feet, which we received.
Okay, great, thank you. I needed that clarification. There is a comparison on page 17 being made with regard to the roundabout in Carmel, Indiana, and how the fire chief in, in Carmel didn't see a problem with the roundabout. But in fact, the roundabouts in Carmel are two-lane roundabouts, they're double-lane, and this is a proposed single-lane roundabout.
They actually have over 60 roundabouts in Carmel, Indiana. And they have a single-lane and dual-lane. They have single-lane roundabouts even as small as 90 feet, which are smaller than the ones at the Galleria. So they have a wide range of, of roundabouts throughout that community in different sizes, all the way from 90, again, to the two lanes that are up around 170, 180 feet in diameter.
Okay, so this, then, what's this one in diameter?
This one, well, it's elliptical, but it's roughly 120-foot diameter. It's similar to the one on Valley View and Seventieth. That one's 124.
All right, well, that's, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
If you want to see the Carmel, Indiana roundabout book, I've got it.
Oh, that'd be great. I'd love to see that.
I might have another couple, two, if you want. One.
Member Ben.
Starting with most recent questions and sort of working around to topics. What have you received from the fire chief in Edina in terms of support for the proposed roundabout?
Wayne, if you could take that one?
Yep. We have not received a memo. We have a memo from our police chief on the roundabouts where we did not receive one from our fire chief. Their, their comments back was that they feel that they're, they're too small for their, for their fire trucks. However, Andy and WSP actually ran some modeling of it as far as deltas. Maybe you can talk a little bit about that we ran the, the fire trucks that we do have in the city through there just to see what the time difference is for slowing down and then maybe you could cover that.
Yeah, and it is covered in the feasibility report as well, but we, we made some assumptions that a fire truck would go through at 30 miles an hour and blow through the stop sign. So we tried to be conservative and that they go through the roundabout roughly at 15 miles an hour, which we ran the trucks through it. And part of it is that elliptical design, most of their, their fire calls, they would be going, if they went north, that's the way they'd be going when they really need to, you know, be going fast. So and that, that way is kind of one of the smoothest ways. So going through the distance and all that, we calculated a delta of about 4.5 seconds on a call that they'd lose if, you know, based on the differences between the roundabout and the four-way stop. But that's assuming again that they're just blowing through the stop sign even at 30 miles an hour, which I guess I can't verify if that's true or not of how fast they go through, but.
So again, just to return to my question, the original answer, the fire chief of Edina does not favor this proposal, correct?
Correct. Correct, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And then to return also to information from the school, because in your initial presentation, you twice identified bus issues. You observed and also talked about resolving bus turning issues. But we do have correspondence in the updated packet that indicates that in fact, the school district does not have a problem with bus turning movements at that intersection.
Well, I think that, and I have some video, if you'd like me to show you of some of the buses, I don't know if you want me to kind of go into that. I have some bus turning movements and I guess if you guys want to be the judge of that, I have some on, on the folder. But I think their philosophy, their response was that in the absence of other vehicles not parked around, they can make it and they absolutely can.
And when you describe difficulties you've observed, it's like tires of the bus going up onto beyond the curb. Would that be what you're describing as a difficulty?
Not beyond the curb, but beyond, out of their lane. A lot of it is, they're coming from the east leg of Benton and they're making the turn and, you know, trying, trying to meander around. And so what I've noticed is not only when they make that first turn, they're actually headed kind of directly head-on with the people that are going southbound on Benton, I mean Tracy, sorry. And then they make that turn and that turn cuts over into that lane that is going eastbound on Benton. That's what I've observed.
I also observed end of school day and observed, not the heaviest congestion, but the buses seemed to make that right turn and then the left turn easily enough. And also, one bus actually took it on a diagonal, but with the traffic held back by the stop signs, the north and southbound traffic, it wasn't a problem the day that I observed. But in any event, back to what the school district has said, the school district and its correspondents from the district has said they have no problem with the bus turning movements.
That's their official stance, yes.
Also returning to your statement or explanation that a roundabout is proven to calm traffic by slowing it down, isn't that what in effect this offset intersection is also doing with the four-way stop?
It definitely creates confusion at the intersection. Now, a majority of the time when there's not traffic, when schools getting out and that sort of thing, it's just like that Tracy Avenue is a through movement. You stop and you go. I, I don't believe stop signs are, yes, they calm traffic at that point, but overall you can see linearly along the whole corridor. So I don't believe it does calm traffic, no.
Well, I guess one thing I can, one question that I would have for you just is in terms of measurements, because although the original feasibility study was not provided with speed, did not contain speed and volume data, the update that we received late last week does. And I don't find any speed or volume data for Tracy or Benton since 2001. So were counts repeated prior to the, the work done on this?
I don't think so.
I don't believe, yeah, I don't, I don't believe that.
Okay, so we have your observation, we have my observation, we have the school district's letter, we have information from people, but we don't have the data other than what we have from 2001.
Correct.
Okay. Any, any crashes at this intersection?
There haven't been any crashes, no.
Okay, and that data's going back at least 10 years?
Correct.
Okay, and there have been crashes that have occurred at other places, specifically, I believe Vernon and Tracy and then much farther south on Tracy?
Correct. Basically Vernon and Tracy and then along those curves that exist south on Tracy.
Okay, but not at this intersection.
Correct.
You also commented in terms of describing the benefits of roundabouts. You talked about the efficiency and reducing emissions. How, how is that accomplished with a roundabout?
Basically, it's a stopping and starting and kind of idling that occurs at four-way stops or signalized intersections. At a roundabout, it operates as, so when there's no traffic there, they continue on. So it's, it's that slow, that stopping maneuver, maneuver to actually accelerating. That's what creates emissions, that's what is fuel consumption, that sort of thing.
How does that fit with people's concern about safe crossing on Tracy? And also the concerns of people who are trying to access, get out of their driveways to the north of Benton? Isn't that continuous flow of traffic not a desirable effect from that, from those two perspectives?
Well, I think the fact that it's continuous movement is not like it's going to create, you know, a backlog of, okay, now all of a sudden it's letting people through so quickly that we have a backup, you know, up to Vernon or something, creating that sort of backup. We, we do have a video also that, that shows kind of, you know, the modeling of how it would go. And basically, there would, there would be no rush hour, if you will, when school gets out. I mean, there'd be a rush hour, but it just, it keeps on operating. In terms of the safety for pedestrians, you know, there's, you're only crossing one lane of traffic at a time. You have the, the refuge island. So you're only looking in one direction and, and also you're only crossing 16 feet at a time as opposed to the full 36. It reduces the actual conflicts from, for the pedestrian in this case, to eight, down to four, which that to me is a safety in terms of pedestrian movement and that sort of thing.
And as Director Huus described, there can also be some narrowing at that intersection with bump outs?
Correct, yes, it could be, yes. Yep, not down to 16 feet, obviously, or anything, but, yep.
As are recommended north on the corridor. Speaking of the width of the corridor, that existing storm sewer trunk line on the east side of the street, how, where does that lie in relation to the curb line and how much room is there? Without moving the storm sewer line itself, how much room is there on the east?
There would be, so we have, it, right now it's underneath the curb. That's where the plans show anyway. I don't, you know, sometimes they offset them and that sort of thing. But there'd be five feet if we didn't want to get into that sidewalk. That's where the boulevard is in terms of, you know, if we wanted to maneuver that around, there's five foot of boulevard.
Right. And how much will the bump outs add to the width of the boulevard?
Six and a half feet. So a total of six, 11 and a half feet in those boulevard areas.
So at places, there would be a boulevard that's over 11 feet wide?
Correct.
I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
You had mentioned earlier that the Transportation Commission recommended leaving Tracy and Benton intersection as is. What were the other recommendations of the Edina Transportation Commission?
In terms of?
Well, bike lanes, for example.
Oh, they, they supported the plan that we have in place. I don't know, Wayne, do you want to mention any more about that?
I can, I can cover it. The corridor to the north is that they supported as written in the feasibility study.
All right, 11-foot travel lanes?
Yep.
Five-foot bike lanes to parking bump outs or?
Correct, yes, yep.
Okay. All right.
Your Honor, if I might, there actually was, they did a very good job of making their decisions point by point by point. And there was support eight to one for seeking a variance to reduce the travel lane width to 10 feet, and that was the one question I forgot to ask in this sub question.
I noticed that too, that they were in favor of reducing the travel lane even further.
Right. And has, it's my understanding that, that, that that can be done and in fact, that was what was done on Highway 100? That lanes, travel lanes were reduced to 10 feet when they restripped to address congestion?
I believe that was, Councilmember Bennett, I believe that was actually done on Highway 100. That's, that's through a different part of Mindot. It's their, their trunk highways is what it goes through for, for those folks. This would have to go through the, the state aid folks and their variance committee. Their next meeting actually would be in June, end of June, I believe, is what, what their next variance that we build, get on their next variance committee. So if you wanted to go that route, you could instruct staff to prepare, we'd probably do it in the resolution tonight, but prepare the, submit it for the variance committee to go after the 10-foot lanes. I don't know, I haven't heard from anyone if, if they've been successful at the variance committee of getting, reducing down the lanes to 10 feet. A lot of cities like we did on 70th Street where we played with the parking width versus the, the travel lane, you know, to, to reduce down, down the width of the roadway.
In terms of the motions actually passed by the Transportation Commission, though, the, at the end of the day, they did approve the roadway section as proposed. Isn't that correct?
Right, that's correct, yes, yep.
All right. Okay, those are all the questions I think council has for you now. Mr. Palmer, stand by. We're going to open this matter up for public hearing. Folks, I know that you've been patiently waiting and have been sitting through two other hearings. So you've heard me say before, you'll have three minutes. Use the side podium unless you have an overhead. We'll give you a handheld microphone if you need it for the center podium and you'll have 30 seconds to wrap up when the yellow light comes on. So who would like to come up as we open the public hearing and offer comment or make inquiry? Please, come on up and give us your name and address before you start your testimony.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Alex Johnson. I live on 5844 St. John's Avenue and I've, I've lived in Edina for 10 years and I'm in 10th grade at Edina High School. I, I feel that Tracy Avenue would be a great place for bike lanes added and it would allow bike riders to travel easier on the Tracy Avenue and be easier for the neighborhood to feel safe. Yeah.
It's okay.
Yeah, take your time, Alex.
It's not easy to get up there and talk. We understand that. Sometimes it's not easy to be up here either.
I take the bus to Edina High School and back home. And taking it home, I take Tracy Avenue and I see Tracy Avenue not being used for parking. I see that every day. And so I feel that, that parking space is just being wasted, not anything. And so bike lanes would be great there. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, who wants to follow Alex Johnson? Come on up.
Sure. We'll make that part of the record.
My name is Steve Ink and I live at 5700 Benton Avenue. That's the northwest corner of the Benton and Tracy, the very famous Benton and Tracy intersection. I've shared with you a, a letter that I got from, received from Minneapolis Police Chief Tim Dolan. First of all, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. While I don't intend to debate all of the intersection ideas of the consultant, I have to say I don't agree with all of the conclusions. It's very simply put, the safety of pedestrians is the main concern, I think, of everyone at Tracy and Benton. And the stop signs have made it safe for schoolchildren for 37 years. I believe taking away these stop signs will make pedestrian crossing more dangerous, not less. Police Chief Dolan knows the intersection very well. His four boys went to Countryside School and Chief Dolan says the quirky nature of the offset intersection makes everyone cautious, especially when children are moving near the road. And I think Chief Dolan has it right. The stop signs work and I think many years ago, the city engineers of that offset intersection got it right also. I believe it's important to note that the school isn't asking for any changes and that's come out. I thought that bus access was an issue and I was hoping that we might solve that by opening up the intersection and possibly making Benton wider on the north side of, of Tracy. That's something I'm, I would still like to see considered. I'm also concerned about safe access in and out of my own driveway. Someone on the Transportation Committee the other night called my driveway a fifth lane into the roundabout. I saw on the drawing tonight that they, there is a move to snake a driveway through my front yard onto Benton Avenue. Over the years, my two boys and I have played a lot in the front yard. People will, will stop me at Jerry's or other places and say, "I've watched your boys grow up." Well, that front yard can't be a driveway. It has to be a front yard. I just wonder who would say, who would, if they were in my shoes, who would welcome that situation? And in closing, I just want to say again, thank you to the mayor and thank you council members for taking the time to talk with me about, about these issues. And, and I do appreciate all the work that's been done to reconstruct Tracy Avenue. It does need work. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Ink. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Going forward. Welcome.
My name is Peter Kelly, 4020 Inglewood Avenue, and I am Chair of the Bike Edina Task Force and I want to thank the council for the opportunity to talk and, and discuss the Tracy Avenue project. I've had a number of conversations with, with people, residents about Tracy Avenue and want to say as, as Bike Task Force, want to say a couple of words just about the bike lanes that are part of this proposed project. The Bike Edina Task Force strongly supports the inclusion of both north and southbound bike lanes on Tracy Avenue and there's a number of key reasons for this. One, and a key one, is Tracy is already a primary bike route, as identified in the City of Edina Comprehensive Bicycle Transportation Plan. It's really the only key north-south route in that neighborhood. It's a direct route that bicycles are going to use whether we have lanes there or not. It directly or indirectly connects with four of the schools in the district, the high school, Valley View, Countryside and Highlands. Tracy will also serve as really a key route into the new Nine Mile Creek Trail that's being developed just south of 62 by the Three Rivers Park District. In general, bike, bike lanes have the following impacts. They really support and encourage cycling, which as a, a do town, we, is something that we already say that we want to do. They really help define the road space, making it safer both for bikes and for cars. They promote, promote a more orderly flow of traffic and encourage cyclists to ride in the correct direction and with the flow of traffic. They also give bicyclists a clear place to ride and keep them off sidewalks, which near a school with a lot of pedestrians is something you really want. You want the bikes to be where they're supposed to be and not trying to weave in and out, in and out among pedestrians. And it also signals to motorists that bikes belong on the define the road space, making it safer both for bikes and for cars. They promote a more orderly flow of traffic and encourage cyclists to ride in the correct direction and with the flow of traffic. They also give bicyclists a clear place to ride and keep them off sidewalks, which near a school with a lot of pedestrians is something you really want. You want the bikes to be where they're supposed to be and not trying to weave in and out among pedestrians. And it also signals to motorists that bikes belong on the road and that they have a place there. They have a right to the road, and it keeps them, they've done some studies, that it keeps them from veering too far into the other lane. If they can see that where the bicyclists are supposed to be, they're not as likely to veer way over in the other line when they cross over. So in just concluding, I just want to say thank you again, and the Bike Edina Task Force is really appreciative of the opportunity to have some input and have some say about this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Come on up. You've been patiently waiting through many things this evening.
I'm Jean Upwath. I live at 6020 Tracy Avenue. I don't see a lot of bicycles going down Tracy Avenue, so I don't know what all the big deal is about putting in bike lanes. I'm retired now and spend a lot of time in my kitchen, which overlooks Tracy, and I doubt if I see more than a couple a day. On the increasing the size of the streets or the area to put in the bike lanes, I don't know. I just don't think it's a good expenditure of our money. Also, on the parking lanes, people rarely park on Tracy Avenue. Everybody's driveway seems to be large enough that they park in their driveway, in their garage, and their visitors also do unless they're having a graduation party or something like that. So one way or the other, I would like to see, you know, maybe one or the other, but not both. And a lot of that is strictly on a personal basis because my yard is like a semicircle, and I bought an acre of land when I moved in there, and if you take four feet all the way around like that, you're taking half my property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Upwath.
Hi, I'm Susan Clark, and I live at 5812 West 61st Street, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you guys. I'd like to say two things about what we've heard tonight. One is that when the Countryside Neighborhood Association Steering Committee met with the principal of the school, she said she would have to get an additional adult volunteer to facilitate the children crossing if they had the roundabout. So that's the first point. The second point is when children, I guess adolescents, are approaching that intersection, driving from the east, I really question if they would slow down enough when they're trying to make class at Edina High School to drive all the way around the roundabout. And I really, I wonder what they're going to do. So, you know, that's, and I guess I have a third question that nobody's really answered. I mean, he, the engineer, Andy, said most of the drivers that he saw making U-turns, how would you prevent that if you had the roundabout? I don't think the roundabout alone could do that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Clark.
I think the comment that he made was that a roundabout is like a U-turn. Isn't that why you said that?
Yeah.
And I would just ask you to please keep the offset intersections with the stop signs. I go through that intersection on foot at least once a day, usually early in the morning, many times at the dinner hour, and the stop signs allow you, when you stop, to make eye contact with the driver. They frequently do because they're watching the dog. They don't want to run anybody over. I don't think you'll have that with the roundabout. And my other concern is if you take width off of Tracy Avenue, how many evergreens, how many mature trees are we going to live, are going to live through that? Because it's going to totally affect the neighborhood, which is already being affected by other projects in other ways. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Kruiser. Is somebody on the way up? Yes, sir. Do you want to hand that to the clerk? We'll make that part of the record.
My name is Bill Rogers. I live at 6100 Arbor Lane, and I probably sent most of those emails that you held up.
No, actually, I think they came from Judith. Is that your wife?
Okay, I'll blame her. 6100 Arbor Lane. I'd like to address the width and configuration of Tracy Avenue between Benton and Vernon, but first of all, I'd like you to leave the intersection at Benton and Tracy as is. It's safe, and all the residents are familiar with it. The stop signs work. Keeping Tracy the same width seems to be the desired end result of the whole neighborhood. The only possible way to keep Tracy Avenue 36 feet wide is to model Tracy after 44th Street, which was resurfaced last year. The recommendations would result in two 11-foot-wide traffic lanes plus one 8-foot-wide parking lane with bumpouts on the east side and crosswalks as presented by engineering, plus one 8-foot-wide shoulder on the west side minus two feet of boulevard on the east side. Plus, we'd include signage stating Edina shares the road as a bike route that equals the same 36-foot width that Tracy is now. I feel there was a precedent set when 44th Street was permitted to not include bike lanes and instead share the road as a bike route. There should be no difference between, I don't know whether countryside or morning side, and a country club in morning side and countryside itself. I think all should be the same. However, 44th Street was considered different because of the trees and older homes, was considered a historic area. Tracy Avenue also has trees we don't want to lose. There are also valued homes we don't want to infringe on and change the quality of life of the residents. Homes on 44th Street had more space between the street and the homes that would have allowed widening the street without the issues it would create for Tracy residents. We also have a quality of life on Tracy that we need to and we should have the right to maintain. A precedent was set with a 44th Street reconstruction project that should be allowed on Tracy. I understand they're using what they call charles on 44th. Many of the comments received from residents between Benton and Vernon were concerned with traffic speed. They were interested in seeing the existing 30 mile per hour speed limit being enforced. This excessive speeding on Tracy in both directions is a biggest safety issue that exists. A roundabout would only add to improved traffic flow and speeding out of the roundabout, probably with cars closer to each other than they are now. The final item I'd like to address is what is the plan for the section of Tracy between Benton and Crosstown? Residents do not understand why this section of Tracy is not being addressed at this time. Will we be going through this whole process again, wondering what the issues we will face then? We don't want to have any more surprises, and I certainly hope we don't have to go through the same rigmarole that we've gone through this time. It's taken up a lot of my time and I'm sure a lot of yours.
You worked hard on it, Mr. Rogers. I have to ask you to stop.
I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening to me, and thanks for being here.
Yes, thank you. Evening.
I'm Gretchen Shonate, and my husband, Tom, had to leave early. We live at 5612 Tracy, fourth house from Vernon, just to the south of Vernon. We've lived there since 1976. Those of us on our block on Tracy are very social. We have lots of parties. We need our parking. We also have kids that, our kids have grown, my kids have grown up, but we've all been bikers, and we get a lot of bike traffic on our end of Tracy. I'm really interested in having a safe bike lane or designated area so when people come rounding the corner off of Vernon to go down Tracy, the bikes are safe. I'd like actually to see more kids biking to school and up to the high school. The way we approach problem-solving, our family would be more like on data, safety data, that type of thing. So I really do defer to you on which is safer, roundabout or the offset intersection or a straightened-out intersection. Just because it's tradition doesn't mean that it's right, and conversely, just because it's new doesn't mean it's right. But I'll let you read the reports. I just really appreciate everyone's thoughtful nature in this, and then personally on our properties, since we're so far back off from Tracy Avenue, we have wanted to stay out of the discussion of how much space to take on the west side because we have such a big yard. We're not impacted. So, thank you.
Yes, thanks, Gretchen.
Hello, Councilman Mayor. My name is David Henry. I live at 5712 Creek Valley Road. I'm here tonight to speak to you as a bicycle commuter on Tracy Avenue. A little background, I commute downtown on every workday. So my commute's 10 miles from my home to downtown, and that can be in the daylight in the summer or in the dark in the winter. Half of my commute is on streets, half's on trail, and door-to-door, because of the deterioration of bus service, I can beat the 587 express bus door-to-door. I think many good points are made. The traveling is every day on my bike. I do notice the excess speed. I think part of that might be due to the fact that in either direction, there are only two speed limit signs. So there's, this is southbound, southbound, this is northbound, northbound. If it's going to stay at 30, maybe an additional sign would help. Certainly enforcement of the speed limit would help. The other thing, in this section from Vernon to Benton, the road is actually, as they've said, 36 feet wide, and it's kind of funny, but the yellow center line is exactly in the center, which is sort of unusual because there's a parking lane allowed over here and not on this side. But because not many of the residents really park here on a daily basis, you get an occasional car. Like, there was a guy that was selling a late-model BMW, and he put it out in the summer, and you just go around one car. It's not a big deal. But because there's not regular use of this parking, you actually have 18 feet, which is a lot of room to maneuver your bike and a car, and I think the need for bike lanes would only come if you really narrowed down the traffic lane, went to 10 feet, for example. I think that point, you trigger the need for a dedicated bike lane. But at this point, this is not certainly a problem to negotiate. As you look, and I think people have said, it might be a good idea to consider the entire stretch of Tracy and maybe do some more studies before you make a decision. But as you get down into the curve, so at this point here, this measurement point three, the road's about 31 feet from curb face to curb face, and as you can see, the yellow center line, it's now off-center. It comes very close on the southbound lane and is only 13 feet wide. I think maybe they're allowing for the parking lane here. Like, this gives you 18 feet. But what happens in this area, as you come through the curvy area, and again, here's Abbott or Arbor Lane. Arbor Lane is again 13 feet on the southbound lane and 18. So really, the most treacherous part of this ride for me every day is when I come home, go southbound, and I'm about three feet from that curb, and now cars who are impatient and want to pass me, I'm doing maybe 20 miles in the winter, 25 miles an hour in the summer. So in the summer, when I'm going 25, they're going 35 to pass me. They cross over this double yellow line, which is illegal, and very hazardous because they're doing that in an area of limited sight distance and intersections that come into play. In this area, you've got Arbor Lane, Ridgeway Road, Highland Road. So I think when you look at what you're going to do in the north section, it really should take into account what happens in the south section, and part of that, I think, is where you strike the center line. Because if it were moved over, you know, I'd like to see a solution here, and I think there is one where you can accommodate the bikes, you can accommodate some parking, and you can accommodate the traffic without having to take land from the homeowners along the stretch. But it's going to be hard for you to do that tonight with the studies you have. I think you'd have to table the discussion for further consideration.
Thanks.
I think that was it really for the, but I do use it every day. I think, you know, when you get out there and the road is very corrupt now with potholes and things, and so having that extra lane up here, the parking lane, really helps the bike maneuver. And of course, in the winter, when you have snow, the lanes actually get a little smaller because you have snow piled up. It doesn't get quite plowed all the way to the edge. But many times, Tracy Avenue's plowed better than Vernon because the counties plow on that. They don't necessarily get to it as quick as our guys get to it.
Good, yeah, thanks.
Sure. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Henry.
Sorry about that. My name is Harvey Haver. I live at 6108 Tracy Avenue, and I'm not in the project that you're doing now, which is my major complaint. I wrote a letter to you, and I think you may recall me, because what you did was just, if I can use the term here, ass-backwards, you know, and the thing, because you've got a simple straight piece of stretch street, and you've got another part with curves going down through there, and I live right at the bottom of the curve at 6108. And I have my mailbox, and Bill next door to me has his, we got two mailboxes on there on the side of the street, and they get taken down periodically by people who come around the curve, particularly after a light snow and stuff like that, and they crash over through the things. And I talked to the consultant, and the, those curves are, do not meet the state standard for the radius. They're too small of a curve. They're too sharp. And, you know, to, what I'm going to give is a cookie cutter down in my corner down there because you're going to decide what's going to be up here, and then you're going to cookie cutter it down. It's just stupid to do something totally different on the bottom half of the thing because Tracy from Vernon to the Crosstown is a, it's a whole street, you know. It's not, it's not two separate halves, one here and one there. And so what you should have been doing, and I don't know who's at fault, who I'm criticizing on this because of the fact that you should have done the difficult half and then did the straight simple one, boom, no, ding. It didn't happen, and I don't know that you're going to stop it now, but that's the real concern because I see a lot of problems there. But with the radius of the curve, the car is sliding out, the snow doesn't get plowed back into the corner there, you know, when they come around that curve, the second curve and stuff like that, you're going to have trouble with bike paths and so on. But I don't want to use all my time on that. Another lady mentioned that she has, like I have apparently, a front kitchen. And so I, I'm having coffee in the morning, I'm watching TV in the kitchen, doing some cooking, doing the winnings in the kitchen where, you know, the busy place in the house, and I'm looking out the window all the time. And the cars pile up at the stop sign in the mornings, but, you know, other than that, we see very few bikes coming down the street. And the idea of having bike lanes painted on the street and taking up space and drawing lines on it, I think we'd much better off to use a bikeway where it doesn't confine the, you don't have to have a certain limits on it, and it can be wider, narrower, and cars and stuff like that. And people are usually pretty courteous when I see them. I very seldom see, in the summertime only when there's a group of bikes, otherwise it's single bikes, and they can go along through there. And a bikeway would be much more And a bike way would be much more flexible than having the bike path. You know, I think a bike way is a great thing, but I think a bike path is just the wrong thing, and we're widening out the street for something that's going to get, not going to get the use that we're creating the space for and running over people's lawns and widening the driveway. I'm sorry, I'm out. I want to ask one other question. Did anybody have about, on the roundabout? My thought is that if any, if a student is going to cross on one of the four directions...
Mr. Haber, I'm sorry. Mr. Haber, I got to cut you off. I haven't given anybody else this much time.
Okay.
I'm sorry. But I think we get to just...
I'd like, I just want to say about the, you've got, you've dropped all classes at once.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Rick Conkey. I live at 5605 Tracy Avenue. I strongly support parking on Tracy, I believe for a few important reasons. Parking is an important asset to our properties. In a challenging market with home values falling, it's important to consider the effect parking would have on prospective buyers. Having spoken to realtors and appraisers, they agree that it's an asset in this marketplace. It would be a negative, a drawback as to not have parking in this market. I believe there is a significant percentage of buyers for whom parking would be important. Because Tracy is such a well-traffic street, our home values are already challenged in a competitive real estate market. We should do what we can to promote the value, and I believe parking is an asset. The ability to park on our street in front of our homes makes Tracy Avenue more a residential street and not simply a throughway between crosstown and Vernon. Parking with bump outs will promote a stronger neighborhood feel, making our street more attractive. A parking lane adds safety. It provides bailout space in the event a driver needs to negotiate something unexpected. Lastly, on a very personal level, we have many family members and friends who are now in their 70s and 80s. We have a couple of 90s that we keep around for entertainment. And when we host Mother's Day and Father's Day, et cetera, side-street parking just wouldn't work. It would be, they won't be able to come unless we provide shuttle service. If shuttle service is in the mix, then we can rethink it. The two segments of Tracy Avenue, I believe, are very different. The south segment has shorter blocks on the east side, and the school and park and fire station occupy a significant length of the west side. Also, the question is very different consideration for Tracy Avenue residents than for homeowners, or for not, for us Tracy Avenue residents and homeowners actually on Tracy. Obviously, this is an important street, and there's a lot of concern from people that move off our street, and I understand that. But we're all interested. We all have a stake in the neighborhood. In this case, the stake is very different. Our stake is a little meatier. And since the planning process began, I believe the primary objective should be to make Tracy Avenue feel more like a neighborhood street. The ability to park in front of my house does that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Conkey. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Andrew Langfield. Sorry, I can't really speak. I live at 5805 Tracy Avenue on the east side. My perspective, I support parking, biking lanes. Well, there aren't very many bikers, but I'm not opposed to them. My opinion is if there's a way, thank you very much.
Dr. Plomack speaking.
If there's a way of possibly getting a, I don't know what they're calling them, variances on the bike lanes, down to, let's say, four lane, four feet wide and 10 feet on the roads, then we could basically do all of that within the 36 feet. Honestly, I get the emails from the Dyna Countryside Association. The biggest issue people have right now is the loss of their land. Most of them would go with most of the proposals, except possibly the roundabout, as long as you didn't take their land. And that's all they have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Langfield.
Good evening. My name is Janet Kramer, and I've resided at 5616 Warden Avenue for 14 years now, better known as the inflatable lady because I have a tendency to put a lot of inflatables in my area. Yeah, I'm the one. Thought I'd lighten it up a little bit. First of all, I really would like to say I do like the proposal that they have come up with. I realize it does talk about taking four feet on the west side. I'm on the east side, and I pretty much have already donated 10 feet for the sidewalk and the boulevard. So, I guess I don't feel that four feet is that much to take from the other side. The parking, I would love to have the bump outs and have my friends be able to park and my family park safely. That's why we don't park on Tracy right now because we don't feel safe trying to do it. Just walking around the car, I get scared. I have a ceiling-to-floor windows in my living room, about half of my house, and I sit there, and I do see a lot of bicyclists go through. And I do worry about them. Because of the position of my house, I can see up the hill going towards the school. And speed is an issue. I love the idea of making it a little narrower, having the traffic hopefully slow down and the speed go down. I know it's hard to lose four feet, but we've already taken 10 from one side. I think it's only fair. And I really would love to have the improvement of having Tracy look more like a neighborhood street than a freeway because I see the racers a lot. And I worry that they're going to come crashing into my house or somebody else or some person. So, thank you very much for your time, and I'm happy that you're doing something on Tracy.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer.
Michael Sonic, 5604 Tracy Avenue. Previous meetings, they had discussed if they were going to implement bike lanes. They were possibly looking at lowering the speed limit to 25. Is that something that will be pursued?
We'll check on that.
Just since Tracy goes between the schools, lots of young drivers, young drivers really like the gas pedal. So, lower speed limit with bike lanes would probably be a good combination. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Sonic. Anyone else?
May I make one more comment? Right now, we have five for you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, sir. Yeah, no. We've already had everybody up once, and I don't want to, I think we've just had to leave with the comments that were made. We've got a pretty rich record between emails and oral testimony tonight, so I think we can have a good discussion. Yes, sir.
My name is Greg Rustad. I live at 5616 Grove Street. And I guess the only question I have is in regards to the bike lanes. Putting a bike lane in from eventually the crosstown to Vernon, there's no extension of a bike lane or a marked, demarked bike lane on Vernon. And extending it further south over the bridge would require modifications to the bridge, which could be very expensive, I would think. So, I don't understand the one-mile roughly length of bike lane. I don't know what purpose that would serve. That's all I can say.
Good. Third question. Anyone else?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Alice Holbert. Address is 7221 Terra Road. Firstly, I want to say that I am disappointed that the high school students are being so disparaged in this meeting with no representation. I am tired of comments about them racing through roundabouts, et cetera. The roundabouts on 70th represent a great barrier between Chipotle, which is a favorite destination at lunchtime, and the high school, and I haven't witnessed any of them being run over in a rush. So, I want a little more respect here.
All right.
I do feel like, looking at the plan, thank you to our engineer. I know it's been a long process, and the department has put in a lot of work coming up with the plan. And I can only compare it to 70th Street, which is a street that I take every day. And I hope in the discussion that Councilmember Sprague speaks to his experience with that also. From my point of view, I don't live on 70th Street, but it's a wonderful improvement, the changes that have been made with the bike lanes and with the roundabouts. I think the traffic moves much, it's slower now than it was, but it seems to be not so much backup at the lights and that sort of thing because of the roundabouts. And I hope that that sort of change would help around the schools when you, if you do something that, like that along Tracy. And bike lanes are part of our comprehensive bike plan that have been on record for years and have been approved and filed with the Met Council. Tracy is a state-aid road, so it serves a higher purpose than a neighborhood street. I think when you live on a state-aid road, it comes with part of that, that you can expect that your road needs to serve all kinds of traffic, not just automobile traffic. So, I would ask you to follow our guidelines that we have placed as part of the bike plan that this road does need bike lanes and consider the roundabout. I think that the visible environment that the roundabouts create make for a much quieter feel to the roads and just a much higher quality to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holbert. Anyone else?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. For a second.
Second.
Motion, second, to close the public hearing, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those saying nay? Carried. All right, we've got some questions that were posed by folks. I think it was Mr. Sonic asked, have we given any thought to pursuing a 25 mile-per-hour speed limit on Tracy? Somebody can do, I think, what we've seen on 70th or what we did on 70th.
Yep. Mayor and council, if that's, if you do go forward with the bike lanes, the five-foot bike lanes would be the very minimum that you could apply the 25 mile an hour, but you could go forward. We didn't put that as part of our recommendation. We thought we had a lot of items happening with this project, but it does give you that ability to, per resolution, drop the speed down to 25 miles an hour in the future.
All right. And then, in kind of going in reverse order, Mr. Rustad inquired as to the issue of connectivity, really. If we don't have bike lanes on Vernon, County Road Vernon, and we've got bike lanes for a mile from Vernon to the crosstown, and we don't have bike lane over the crosstown bridge, what's the purpose?
Yep. A lot of times, when you're building out a system or starting out a system, you wonder why you're doing little segments here and there, but it all is part of one big system. In the comprehensive plan that was passed, you have the bicycle comprehensive plan that has a system of primary and secondary routes. And this is, fits the primary route. And as we go through the city, we're, this year, we're trying to pick off the low-hanging fruit, so we're looking at, like Cahill and West 70th Street, Antrim, areas that we can look at of restriping. As we're reconstructing roadways, we're looking at what's part of the comprehensive plan, what should we be including on a project, and this is one of them. So, yes, you'd have a segment that would just have a bike way. The rest of it would be a share, share the road until at such time that you either reconstruct the roadway or you restripe it accordingly to accommodate the cyclists. Going over the bridge, we did apply for some state funding. We weren't successful on that state funding. That's going, the results of that started going through the ETC, and they'll be on to you through their minutes and such. So, we weren't successful on that funding, but in a year or two, is that we'll revise or look at the, you know, what's going on down on that intersection along with the south end of Tracy. Because I think there was a comment made that why not do the entire stretch of Tracy right now, at least figure out the design. But as we look at it, it is two separate roads, just like Benton to the east is another state-aid road that, that's a different type of roadway itself. So, we much prefer to be looking at these in different, in segments. Benton to Vernon, that's a straightaway. That's a pretty easy corridor to look at and come up with some resolution. Going to the south, that's going to have to take a little bit more study and go around those curves and by the fire station and down by the interchange.
Okay. Mr. Langfield was concerned over the loss of land on the west side and wondered what it would take to be able to accomplish everything we want to accomplish and still stay within that 36-foot-wide footprint. What are your thoughts on that?
I think one of the speakers said it pretty good, and I was going to bring it up during your questions of Andy Plomack, is why on the west side? And I believe the, you know, if you look at the, in the feasibility study of the existing cross-section, it is, the roadway and the sidewalks are banked to the east. And so, you do have right-of-way, public right-of-way, that's on the west side of the roadway. And so, when we're looking at it, we try to look at, well, what's fair to the neighbors, especially if you're not adding a sidewalk to the west side, is, it's really not that much property. It's still public property or rights to that property that the public has. So, that's why we prefer to extend it to the west versus to the east. Can you reduce it down? Yeah, you'd have to, you would have to eliminate one of these components or try to go after a variance on the lane west or the parking bay west. You wouldn't eliminate it completely down to the forefoot at the widening though.
Okay. I think you answered one of the questions that was raised by Mr. Henry, and Mr. Haber had the concern too, that it seemed like we should be looking at the whole roadway. But I think you explained why we, why, at least you're taking the approach that we should do it in sections.
Right, right.
Ms. Krußner was concerned about how the project might affect some of the mature trees. And why don't you talk a little bit about our experience with mature trees and doing projects like this?
When we're designing roadway, and I'll probably have Andrew to come up and talk a little bit about if there is any vegetation, major vegetation that's been affected. But we typically have worked around trees as much as we can with the roadway. And that's, the reference was made to West 44th Street, which is actually a different, another totally different corridor. But we've worked around mature trees as much as we can and not have affected the mature trees. And what we do in our, way to accomplish that is in our specifications, is that we actually have a sliding penalty scale for contractors that if they damage a tree, depending on the severity of the damages, that we penalize them pretty good, actually, as far as dollar-wise goes. And then, and if they do damage a tree, those monies go back to that homeowner since they're ultimately responsible for that tree. And we have yet to have a penalty be assigned to a contractor. By just having that in the specifications, it shows that we're real serious about protecting our trees, and they pretty much stay away from the trees during the project. And that even includes a drive-in heavy equipment up on the boulevard so that you're not compacting the root system. That's going to be eventually affecting the trees.
Mr. Plomack, could you come up and comment on, you know, if the council should decide that it's going to accept the recommendation on the width of the roadway as proposed, it's going to mean the roadway will be four feet wider on the west side? And are there some trees on the boulevard there that are going to be impacted or removed? And to the extent there are some trees adjacent to the right-of-way on homeowner property, what are you going to do to make sure they're as safe as possible?
Well, we, there are some trees that are in the right-of-way, kind of north of Grove Street. There's the one parcel that has a lot of, I wouldn't say that they're, you know, large in diameter trees too much. They're, you know, the ones that we're talking about taking would be, you know, kind of, I don't know the exact diameter, probably, you know, eight to 12 inches or something. During construction, you know, we do everything we can, and even if it included, you know, possibly building retaining walls or something to keep good trees. But overall, you know, most of the trees are back near the right-of-way line or even behind it for a majority of the corridor. And so, it, most of them are back, you know, a good nine feet from the proposed curb line. So, you know, we do everything we can to obviously keep those like they are.
Okay. Yeah. Mr. Hall, you had mentioned... Mr. Hoel, you had mentioned 44th Street, and Mr. Rogers thought that 44th Street was a model for Tracy. Would you comment on whether you think there's a distinction between 44th Street project and the Tracy Avenue project?
Yes, Mayor and council, the, the 44th Street project varies, is that, that it does have a historic grove of Catalpa trees that are on a portion of that project that we are protecting. It wasn't really the historic houses, although, I mean, those are nice, the houses here are nice also. But it was, is mostly the trees. And actually, the roadway itself wasn't a consistent width like you have on Tracy. It actually has a width that varied from one, from Highway 100 to France of 26 feet to 40 feet. The majority of the roadway itself was around 26 feet to 29 feet wide. So, so it really didn't lend itself to any widening, especially with the trees. And where, the only really place that we really widened it was by the park, that we added some parking bays out there. This, the, the volumes are fairly similar. The 2011 volume of Tracy is about 38, almost 3,900 vehicles per day. The north part of Tracy is around 4,600 on 2005 data. And this, and the south end of, south of Benton is about 8,500. So it, volume wise, it's about the same. Speed wise, definitely a lot lower on 44th Street than you have on, on Tracy itself. But the big thing is that width and, and the vegetation and the historic trees that we have had on 44th Street. We are, we've held off on striping 44th Street. Reason being is, is we want to find out what's going to be planned or what's going to be approved on Wooddale to the south, south of 50th. And, and we're, we're hoping that if we're successful with maybe some advisory bike lanes or something like that on 44th, is that we would, would do something more experimental like that on, on 44th Street itself. So that's kind of the differences that, that we see, see on, on both of those routes.
We heard several folks say that they want to maintain that neighborhood feel, and I saw that dialogue, I believe, in the Transportation Commission minutes as well. I think everybody has that concern. This may be a question for you or Mr. Paulman, or even Member Sprague, who lives on West Seventieth Street. I notice a remarkable difference on your street, for example, in terms of the, of the speed now and, and the feel of the, of the street. It doesn't feel any longer like it's a collector or a minor arterial connecting a trunk highway to a regional shopping center. It feels like a neighborhood street. And I think everybody wants to make sure we accomplish that with the work that we would do on Tracy. So what, what would you say to the concern, or how would you address the concern that folks want to make sure that whatever we do helps maintain a neighborhood feel or enhances a neighborhood feel?
I, if I can answer, answer part of that. But, you know, when, when you're looking at a corridor, there's a lot of things that you can do. And I think the, the, the city and the Transportation Commission is, is approaching that. When you're looking at the livable streets or the living streets, you know, complete streets, that, that whole philosophy of incorporating different modes of transportation, not just vehicles on a roadway, that you'd have pedestrians, you know, cyclists, you'd have buses, those types, and vehicles on the roadway. So if you accommodate all those different modes, keep, and also encompass more of an environmental feel to it so that, so that when you're looking at putting, you know, accommodating the pedestrians, for instance, and you have the bump outs, is that, that you pre, you know, you, you design the bump outs so that they're not paved areas, but they're grassy areas or turf areas or vegetated areas. So you, you kind of, kind of close down that corridor a little bit. And what, what Andy was talking about, a kind of a friction, you know, that you're going through, is that people are more apt to slow down just because of the vigil and you're closing in than the actual corridor, the driving, driving area. But so I think if you, and pull in all those different aspects of, of a roadway and try to put them in place on a, on a roadway such as this, that you're going to have that residential feel. You know, we were, we, we've done it on Seventieth Street, and I think, you know, it's been proven by some of the residents that have lived on Seventieth, other than Councilmember Sprague, that, that enjoyed living on the street now, that you have more of the residential feel. You also have Concord, is that we've, if you recall, Concord used to be a concrete roadway. And, and we've replaced, yeah, another, another one up there, is that, is that you have the, the parking bays and, and you have the asphalt street. And, and it really, and you, and you narrowed in the crossings for the paths at the intersection. So it, it makes it feel more of a, of a residential, residential street. So I think we've been successful in, in those two cases, and, and we would be successful on this one also.
Ms. Uphoff said that we shouldn't widen the street to put in bike lanes and the parking's unnecessary, do one or the other, but not both. And she's, she says that because she's worried about us taking half of her property. And I, I haven't heard you say anything about a condemnation issue here. Is the property that we would use on the west side all within the right of way?
Yes. Every, the, the four feet is within the right of way. That comment was, was made by Ms. Waugh, that 620, which is actually in the southern portion between Benton and the crosstown around the curves. And like I say, we'd have to really study those areas.
Okay.
And just because we're, we're proposing to take four feet north of Benton doesn't necessarily mean that we take four feet south, south of Benton.
All right. Yeah, thank you. And then, Mr. Enk had a, had a notion of, you know, he called it widening, at least my notes says widening Benton on the north side of Tracy. I'm not sure exactly, I think he meant on the west side of Tracy. And maybe I wrote it down wrong. So was that idea given some consideration?
We, we did, we did look at that. And what he was referring to, if I have it right, is that he would widen out the throat of Benton Avenue west of Tracy so that the buses and such would have more pavement or more room to, to move, maneuver around on that area. And I believe is the way, maybe, and Andy, you can kind of cover the, just still the overlapping lefts that you would have on it.
Yeah, it's still, it, it would help the bus turn movements if, the one thing is, you know, widening out a section of pavement, you know, doesn't mean that, you know, people aren't going to cheat over. And one thing that you notice out there right now, when, when parents are picking up on that sort of thing, they use pretty much every square inch of pavement that they can, short of like actually blocking the intersection. So I think what would end up happening is that, you know, you'd almost, you'd stripe it, but you'd almost have it where they would have enough room to actually have like a through lane and a right turn lane coming off that west leg. So I, I think that, you know, the spirit is there in terms of getting, having more pavement, but I'm not sure that it would accomplish everything because I think it would just create more pavement that people would end up either parking in or, you know, using as a right turn lane.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Did I miss any questions, folks?
Mr. Mayor and council, the one, the one question that Mr. Enk had was his, was his driveway location. And, and those alternatives that you, that you saw is that we actually positioned the driveway as it's written in the city code, where the city code requires 50 feet from an intersection. And so we have, we have, we positioned that just to show you what, what 50 feet would look like for him. He's about 18 feet from the intersection, which, which I would, if, if, if a new curb cut came in today, we, we would probably try to get him to move it a little bit further to the west because it just is too close to an intersection, a busy intersection, to have a driveway to come, come off of that. The other option was, that, that we looked at on that was, could that driveway come off of Tracy? But once again, the city code is pretty prescriptive as far as which roadway is that a driveway comes off to, if, if you're on a corner lot and have an option to be on a, on a non-collector or above classification roadway, so more on a, on a local street, which Benton to the west is considered a local street.
Other questions by council? I think the proposed improvements, if I wrote them down correctly, were the roundabout, the enhanced at Benton and Tracy, the enhanced parking lanes on the east side with the bump outs, five-foot bike lanes in each direction, 11-foot travel lanes. It was the plan that the Transportation Commissioner approved as is. It was a 60-foot overall right of way, I think. Member Bennett, did I miss something there?
Well, if you're saying that the Transportation Commission recommended approval of the roundabout, that is not...
No, I'm just talking about the travel lane.
Yeah, the, the portion north of Benton.
Yeah, the roadway recommendation was theirs as is, except they did not approve the roundabout. They opposed the roundabout. They liked the existing configuration. So I'm wondering what the notion of the council is, is there someone who would want to make a motion and then we can have a discussion? Or do you want to have a discussion first?
I would, I would like to move approval of the project, but subject to two conditions. One is that we include a 25 mile per hour speed limit reduction. And with that, at least one radar speed sign. Maybe it's the approach to the school on one side or the other, but that's been effective on Seventieth. And with the other condition being that we include some type of bio-swell or stormwater retention plan for the boulevard at the low point north of the roundabout when you come down the hill, basically where the low point in elevation is. Because I think there's an opportunity there to, to do some type of biofiltration, basically, basically in the, in the boulevard section. And that has not been included in this plan.
All right. So your, your motion would be to adopt the proposed improvements as suggested by staff along with a 25 mile an hour speed limit on the roadway? And that would be from Vernon all the way to the crosstown, I figured?
Correct.
And then installing a bio-swell north of the roundabout. So we've got the roundabout squarely positioned in the middle of this motion here. Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
All right. Let's have some discussion then on the matter. Member Swenson?
I live on a redone school street. I went from concrete to tar. You'll love it. I have bump outs for parking. They're across the street. I'm okay with that. So the cars go right next to my house. I lost some in my front yard to that. I understood that was part of the deal. And I did get a sidewalk across the street that's protected by the bump outs. That's also a great deal. I support all that. I support bike lanes. The part I don't support is the roundabout, and I just don't have a comfort level with it. And I've read everything about it, and I understand aesthetically what it is. I don't know why it doesn't feel right to me in the middle of a residential area in a school zone. I started this project wanting the intersection to be reconfigured out and straightened out. I actually asked Director Hoel to do that when he started on this because I pick up my grandson there, you know, multiple days a week, three, three years in a row. But I've learned to understand that that odd intersection does work. And it took actually Jennifer Janovi about an hour on the phone to explain to me why there aren't any crashes there and why you as a neighborhood like your intersection. And I guess I can be okay with that. But what I really want is I want a safer way for the kids to be able to walk across. So I'm interested in a 25 mile an hour speed limit. I'm interested in crosswalk enhancement, hopefully a blinking light, something that I know makes it better for when that crossing guard isn't there and those kids with flags aren't there, that they can get there. I do think we need two no U-turn signs because you U-turn two different ways. You turn, you turn coming to park, and sometimes when you've picked up your kid, you do a U-turn on Tracy to take him back up north. So we do need, need no U-turn signs. We also need no stopping signs in that area close to the sidewalk where it doesn't go in by the school because if you don't make it early enough, that would be about 23 minutes before the buzzer. You end up having to park either in the dreaded roundabout down below, or you're in the way of people trying to cross the street. So we do have to solve that too. But that is what I would support for this street.
Thank you. Why don't we just go right down the line? Member Bennett, do you want to just tell us a little bit about what you could support?
I support the design of the street north of Benton wholeheartedly. And I would like to, with the addition of the bump out, which I think will be a real enhancement, it's been gratifying to hear the different comments from throughout the neighborhood on the street, but also the neighborhoods east and west of Tracy. I, one, I am still questioning whether it's not possible to move some of the widening of the roadway, understanding that with the bike lane and travel lanes, even if travel lanes remain 11 feet, it's 32 feet from the bump out to the back of the curb on the other side. So there's actually a narrowing of the roadway at the bump out from 36 to 32 feet. Am I correct, Director Hoel?
Thirty-three and a half.
Thirty-three and a half?
You lose that six and a half.
Okay, and that's because of the striping?
Yeah, yeah, the bike lane has to be there. You can't lose it also. Yeah, if you, you have to, so you're losing six and a half feet because of parking.
And that foot and a half is included in the parking, so that's what makes it total of eight. So when it comes up, you still have to have that five feet plus the foot and a half gutter. So that's why it's 33 and a half.
Okay. But it's still a narrowing from the roadways that currently exist, which I think people will also appreciate. I, I appreciate the fact that with bicycle lanes, we will be able to, as a municipality, reduce the speed limit to 25 miles per hour on our own motion, our own ordinance change or resolution. I, once upon a time, really liked the idea of sidewalk on the west side. I see with the volumes, again, the bump outs will provide an enhanced crossings. I support the suggestions that Member Swenson has made for improved pedestrian safety and movement and visibility at the intersection of Benton and Tracy. So with the, with the concern, again, about whether or not it's possible to gain some, understanding that with the bump out, there will be addition to the boulevard, not requesting or questioning at all the location of the sidewalk, which remains where it is, whether it's possible to move that curb line since so much of the curb is being reconstructed with the bump out anyway. And then that would reduce the amount of widening to the west, as I understand it. Am I correct?
You can, you can, so what you're asking for is, is in the, in the parking bays is to reduce the, the boulevard width, right? And which, which essentially would reduce the, the width of the roadway itself. What, what you would, what it would be doing is if you're, right now, I believe it's a five-foot boulevard. And typically, we, we don't treat the water, the sidewalk in the boulevard when, when you have a five-foot boulevard. It's typically from a watershed perspective. If you go down below a five foot and you go down to a four foot, then that, then you're adding that whole nine feet along that entire corridor that you have to treat that water. And what that does is, is the treatment structures and everything else that, that you have to size for becomes larger and more costly. So what we try to do is, is try to keep a five-foot boulevard when we're putting in sidewalks so we don't have to treat that corridor of water, essentially.
Okay.
It's a runoff issue, I think.
Yeah, I, I, in, a written explanation of that at some point would have been really helpful. I see, I hear it more clearly now. This is the clearest I have heard this explained or seen it, I have not seen it explained. So then, even though with the bump out, we'll have a much wider boulevard at certain points, at the bump out points?
No.
Okay. And then finally, Member Swenson, I do appreciate your comments about the, the roundabout. I share your concerns. I think the intersection functions very well in terms of safety data and, again, support what you are proposing for pedestrian safety, which could be, functions, but could be enhanced, that visibility, I think, is important. Thank you.
Member Bynum?
I have got so many notes on this. 25 miles an hour, it sounds like it would be terribly slow, but the effect of it in the neighborhood on Seventieth Street, I, I just, I mean, the, the environment is so similar, where there's a school and there are homes on, facing Tracy, facing Seventieth. And, and the calming effect that 25 miles an hour has had on Seventieth is, is something that I, I think would benefit this area a great deal. I do not want to see the roundabout. My gut feel about a roundabout, not that I'm not a fan of roundabouts, because in the right place, they're great things. But a roundabout is meant to move traffic. And at that corner, we want to do anything but with regard to getting kids across the street to the school and to the park and back across, back to their homes. So the roundabout just isn't proven to me to be the right tool. So the roundabout just isn't proven to me to be the right tool. And as far as fireworks are concerned, I don't, I really don't want to impede their progress on Tracy. And putting a curb in is going to slow them down in a crucial time. So you may as well just give them a straight shot. They're making as much noise as they possibly can to alert people that they're coming through and they need to get through. Sidewalk, I want sidewalks everywhere. So where there isn't, I'd love to see them, so we'll just see what we can do as we go forward to make sure that we correct any missing links on Tracy. But anywhere there is a sidewalk that needs repair, I heard Andy say earlier that they would be dealt with, and that's great. Parking bump outs, I think of Lyndale Avenue and the unbelievable change that occurred on Lyndale Avenue. And if they can do it on Lyndale, they can do it anywhere, where it's single lanes both directions, parking bump outs, boulevards, it is beautiful. So it created the meandering feel on Lyndale that would be really nice here. It would be, that's kind of my vision for what this could look like. Bike lanes, as I have visited with neighbors, I did mention, bikes can ride on 70th, bike riders can ride on 70th, with or without a bike lane. So to me, it's a safety issue. It tells the motorist where they belong, and it tells the cyclist where they belong. And by state statute, they belong there, and we need to be friendly with one another. So I see both share the road signs, and there is enough uphill downhill as you're approaching the Benton-Tracy intersection, so as you're coming, I'm terrible with directions, as you're coming south on Tracy toward Benton, I believe you have a rise. And so it would be good to say to a motorist, there's an intersection coming up. And certainly, on the other end, when we get to that, it would be good to tell the motorist that this is a curvy section, and this is why it's 25 miles an hour. So just making it possible for David, and I respect you, that you are a commuter every day of the year, it's amazing. But I do know people who, with their families, ride on 70th, and so we need that protection. We up here, we are not designing this intersection for today. We're designing it for 20 years from now and 30 years from now, for the next owner of your homes, and what they're gonna expect and demand of the roadway system and how they're going to use it. So while we listen, and truly, we have read and listened to everything we've gotten, it is important for us to think forward for what that roadway needs to be, because we're not gonna tear it apart again. This is our chance to build it for the next, possibly the next generation. Let me see. I did, I did put my engineering hat on and came up with the alternate, the alternate intersection. It was actually at Mr. Enck's kitchen. We were sitting there, kind of experimenting with what could happen. So, but as far as that intersection goes, I would leave it as-is. I've heard enough people, both Catherine Bass and Jennifer Janneby, tell me, the irregularity of that intersection is enough to cause people to use caution. Now, we do have the advantage of some time, I'll put this out there, in that the other piece of Tracy will meet this intersection. And if we devise a better method, maybe by that time, we'll have, we'll have some time to think about it. But at this point, I'd leave it alone. I would just make sure that the crosswalks are contiguous, are carefully done, are carefully marked, and that the bike lanes, I don't agree that this is a one-mile piece that doesn't go anywhere, because it does meet other streets that take you places. It's just we haven't marked those lanes yet. So I think, as Wayne said, it is part of a larger system. No U-turns. Parents picking up kids have got to think about what they're doing when they decide they're gonna make a U-turn on Tracy, when the traffic is coming uphill toward them and they can't, they can't see you're making a U-turn, and you can't see they're coming. So there can't be a U-turn there. There are ways to go around the block and get around, and I think that ought to be there. One idea that the Transportation Commission had that I like very much is on the stretch of Benton west of Tracy in front of Mr. Enck's house going toward Good Samaritan Church. By widening Benton, I think you could add a lane for parking on the south side of Benton and give some of those drivers who otherwise would make a U-turn on Tracy, a way to get off of Tracy, wait for their child, and have that safe haven of parking on that stretch of Benton. So I'll just throw that out there. It's, I don't know if that's, we haven't talked about that aspect of it tonight, but I think it makes sense, and it would widen onto school property. It would widen on that we wouldn't take any part of, we wouldn't move a curb on the residential I think, I've said everything. And I truly thank you for your courteousness and taking the time and effort it has taken to communicate on this. It's a big deal, and we work together on it, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I also wanna thank everybody in this room for the high level of discourse, and I especially wanna thank our Edina Transportation Commission. They've done some mighty fine work here. And you can tell from the tenor of the conversation we had this night, tonight, that we're having it as neighbors and friends, and we've got some varied opinions on things, but we're gonna get to a common conclusion here at the council on what to do to improve your neighborhood. I mean, that street has almost reached third-world conditions, and it needs to be fixed. And so I'm looking forward to a great neighborhood street, the great neighborhood street that everybody wants. And I think what the Edina Transportation Commission recommended is consistent with what I think here as well. I wanna leave that existing intersection, that Tracy and Benton, as-is. I can't see where yielding is safer than stopping. I think stopping is definitely safer than yielding. Ms. Clark, I think, was concerned about that sort of sling effect from westbound Benton to southbound Tracy, and I think it's a legitimate concern once a kid's in the roundabout, or anybody's in the roundabout. So I favor the intersection as-is. I favor the recommendation and adopt the recommendation personally of the ETC with respect to approval that roadway section is proposed in the February 6, 2012 feasibility study with the bump outs that was mentioned, that were mentioned by Member Bennett. So we would have, as I understand it, 11-foot drive lanes, five-foot of bikeway on each side, and then the drive, the driving bays with the bump outs. And I think it's a great plan, a lot of parking bays, a great effort on the part of everybody in the community on this. Again, I thank you for all of these. They were all read, all absorbed. And now we have a situation where Mr. Sprague, Member Sprague, stands alone on his motion, and I think we're gonna have to probably get a vote on that one and then move it again.
Let me, let me offer my minority opinion before you go. Because I actually agree with the engineers on this one. I had some pretty in-depth conversations with Mr. Plowman, and I think that this would be a perfect application for a roundabout in this, in this location, and could serve as a model in other school locations. We don't have one yet at a school. I know one was, was suggested on 70th Street adjacent to the school, so this isn't the first time. It's unprecedented. And that didn't happen because we didn't have sufficient right-of-way. But the first thing about roundabout, Mayor, you said yielding, or stopping is safer than yielding, and I beg to disagree. The conflict points in a roundabout for pedestrian are reduced from 24 to eight, and it's simply the nature of how it's set up. You're orienting yourself towards one conflict at a time instead of multiple at the same time. Same for a biker going through there. And in addition, the roundabout syncs up the speed of the bike and the car, so they're approaching each other at a similar speed, which is also a safety benefit. The crossing condition at peak hour would be exactly the same, except that with the crossing guard there, as it would be at a four-way, at that four-way offset, the pedestrian would have a shorter distance to cross, and as well as a refuge island. The crossing guards will be out there in both conditions. On non-peak hours, the pedestrian has a shorter distance to cross, less conflict points to navigate, and everyone is, everyone's awareness is heightened. I read some literature that said, you know, roundabouts are bad because it transfers the need for awareness from the driver to the pedestrian, and I disagree. I think that pedestrians at that intersection have a false sense of security walking across that intersection. I also disagree wholeheartedly that because there hasn't been an accident, we should leave the condition as-is. I personally feel that our mission is to provide sound public infrastructure, and leaving a intersection in a substandard engineered condition, to me, is not sound public infrastructure. In addition, a roundabout is not, this is not experimental. They've been around for many, many years. We are late adopters in Edina, but they're all around the country, they've been around the world for a long time. They're called different things, but basically it's the same concept. And, and so again, I think it would be, it would be great to see another application done here. I thought the design was very thoughtful. And I think some of the myths of roundabouts, there's a handout that, that was circulated at some point. I think people are still succumbing to some of those myths, and I would, I would encourage people to take another look at that pamphlet, including my colleagues, because it seems like some of those arguments are coming up tonight. And I understand, the positive part is, everybody is concerned about those children crossing, and we all have a different perspective on what will enhance the safety the most. But I, again, I can't intuitively see leaving a substandard intersection in that condition. The other thing is, in terms of the traffic flow at peak hour, when you have a pedestrian that stops traffic, you know, whether it's at the four-way or people are in the roundabout, traffic flow will resume faster in the roundabout than it would at a four-way stop, where they will have all been backed up and will be delayed to stop each car. So you actually return to a, a better flow condition faster. And there's nothing wrong with flow at a certain speed. It's the speed that is deadly, it's not the flow, per se. So for all those reasons, I still support a roundabout. I talked to our, one of our engineers on the ETC, Michael Thompson, and he gave a lot of positive points that have been raised by the engineering staff as well, and that's why I, I truly believe that is the best solution for improving that intersection and not leaving it in a substandard condition. And with that goes the consideration of Mr. Enck's driveway, which is in the substandard condition right now, and it would be moved further away from the intersection, which is how it should have been originally designed for the safety of all users there as well.
Good. Well said. All right, we've got a motion, we got a second. All those in favor of Member Sprague's motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Nay. Motion fails. Do we have a substitute motion?
I'll make a motion for the plan recommended by Transportation that maintains the engineering study north of the Benton School all the way up to Vernon with the bump outs, a 25 mile an hour request for speed, crosswalk enhancements at the school. And Wayne, I'm gonna request that you do a traffic study and look at the lights along with other things, and leaving the Tracy and Benton intersection as it is in its offset alignment. Did I miss anything?
The radar.
Your U-turn, or U-turn signs?
No U-turn.
Just deal with those.
Do you want me to dispel those, or do you wanna just take them as the notes, the radar and the U-turn and the, no U-turn and the?
We can look at the no U-turns with the Traffic Safety Committee. The radar, I would recommend that you put that as part of your resolution, if that's what you want as part of the project.
The radar speed sign, which has been effective on 70th.
Are you comfortable with that, Member Bennett?
Yes, I think in terms of requesting, I would also, not necessarily as part of this motion, like to see some enforcement of the no, of the U-turn restriction.
No, no, that's fine. Right. But understanding that we're talking about construction.
So I will add the radar, then also to the motion.
I will second.
Further discussion?
Yes, I would suggest somebody include something about stormwater management as well in that street, where we've gone from complete streets to living streets, and I think that should be addressed in the plan, and I think there's some options, again, at that low point north of the intersection, especially with the curb bump outs, where we could do some bioswales and filter the stormwater, improve stormwater, or the water quality in Hawks Lake.
Do you accept that friendly amendment to look at living streets concepts that might be applicable to this section of the roadway?
Yes, but, you know, the neighborhood hasn't really been able to weigh in on that, so could we, could you look at it, but I'd rather that it, that at least they'd be able to have the option of seeing what it is that's being recommended, so that they can respond to it. I agree that living streets and filtering water down to Hawks Lake, which is kind of, you know, landlocked, so to speak. And if that would work, yes, but I don't wanna put it in a motion that ties this project to it without input from the community. So can that just be a post-recommendation?
I believe it could be, yep.
All right, so we won't deal with it as an amendment. We'll deal with the main motion in the second. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Excuse me, Your Honor, this is a roll call.
Roll call, thank you.
Member Sprague?
Nay.
Member Swenson?
Aye.
Member Bennett?
Aye.
Member Brendel?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate all your input. Next section of the agenda is community comment. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to come up and express a concern to the council, feel free to come forward. Good evening.
Hi. Sorry, I know everyone's half asleep, so I'll try to make this short. My name's Andrea Anderson. I live at 11 Cooper Avenue in Edina, I have an Ereda Boulevard. And I realize that this has been getting a lot of attention in our community, but I wanted to bring it to the forefront of your attention this evening, because, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, I'm here to represent a number of residents in Edina today. We are deeply concerned, and we are asking you to take immediate action and, most importantly, make it public what the city's official plan to mitigate the coyote population in Edina I am here to tell you that this coyote problem is causing some very intrinsic fear in many of us, that there is some potential, that there is a potential for confrontation and danger right outside of our doors is very scary to a lot of us. The education on hazing is a great step in the community awareness, but it is not a solution. This practice may or may not cause these coyotes to be afraid of us, but most certainly it will not cause the problem to go away. We as residents deserve more in this community, and we shouldn't have to be looking over our shoulder, we shouldn't have to be afraid for our pets and our young children, especially on our own property or within our own fenced backyards. As last night, I listened to the presentation on hazing, it was stated that in Edina- It was stated that in Edina, our fences can only be six feet tall, and a coyote can very clearly jump over a six-foot fence. So we're not even safe with our young children and our pets in our own backyards anymore. And to me frankly, that's not okay in this city. We live in Edina because it's the city. We're not in the woods. We live here to be protected. We live here, and we pay a high price to do so, and so we don't have to worry about the crime and the danger in other parts of the city. I'm here to tell you, though, that this coyote problem is causing us that same trepidation and that same fear, because myself and a lot of my neighbors are afraid to go out at night at 11 o'clock by themselves with two of their animals, because they don't know what's in their backyard that's going to possibly be stalking their 12-pound animal or potentially be scouting out for the next day that they're going to come back and get something to eat. And also, the biggest thing here is that this is not one or two. This might have started out as one or two years ago. I grew up in Edina. This was never a problem before. Now it's a problem. There are six coyotes that we know of that are living down the street in Hilldale neighborhood from my house. I have an 18-month-old son, and I have two dogs, and frankly, it's a problem that I am scared to go out any time of day now with all three of them, because frankly, if a coyote entered in my property, I wouldn't be able to do anything with all three things. I'm asking you today to please come together and make a decision of how this is going to be mitigated, because we've got to take a stance before it becomes too big of a problem that we can't do anything about it.
Thanks, Andrea. Let's check in with the chief and have someone try to visit with you and look at this policy again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. We'll move on to the Reports and Recommendations section of the agenda. We have a resolution accepting various donations. Is there a motion on that?
No.
All right. We moved and seconded, we adopt Resolution 2012-40, accepting various donations. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. The donations this period were to the Edina Art Center, Brimar Memorial Fund for future golf course equipment purchases, and to the Edina Fire Department. Next matter is the potential issuance of an intoxicating on-sale renewal of a liquor license for Coachina Del Barrio. And who has this matter? Clerk Mangan.
Yes. Mayor and Council, Edina Code section requires that all establishments holding liquor licenses within the city maintain a ratio of food to alcohol sales of 60% to 40%. The City Council at their meeting on February 21st adopted an amendment to the city code that would allow them to grant a probationary license to an entity not achieving the required 60-40 ratio. The new ordinance requires the licensee to develop a plan by which they hope to achieve the required 60-40 ratio within a 12-month period, and it also specifies a staff visit at six months. At the time that Coachina Del Barrio submitted its application for renewal, their ratio was 51-49. However, the owner, Ryan Barnett, has stated in his attached letter to my report, his intention of working on achieving the ratio and accepting a $500 fine. Mr. Barnett has also developed strategies his establishment intends to use to increase their food sales. He met with Police Chief Jeff Long, Deputy Clerk Jane Timm, and myself to explain the strategies they intend to pursue. Staff believes they are sincere in their desire to achieve our desired ratio, and we therefore request that the council grant Barrio a 12-month probationary license for their Sunday sale and intoxicating liquor license and impose the $500 fine. The license would be effective from April 1st of 2012 through March 31st of 2013. Staff would work with the licensee during the probationary period, and a monitoring visit will be scheduled for six months.
Thank you. Any questions for Clerk Mangan?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All right. Very good. Any further discussion? We've had some good discussion on this in the past. We thank Mr. Barnett for coming in, indicating his concern over this issue, I think, again by his appearance here this evening. All those in favor of issuing the on-sale intoxicating probationary liquor license and Sunday sale liquor license to Coachina Del Barrio and imposing a $500 fine on Coachina Del Barrio, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. All right. Next matter is the Resolution Number 42, adopting precinct boundaries and polling locations. And we went over this earlier in the evening. We've got a revised Item 8C, thanks to some very nice work by Member Bennett, who labored through all of the legal descriptions here and found some corrections that needed to be made that were important to make. And so do we have a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll move.
Second.
All right. Discussion. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 2012-42, adopting precinct boundaries and polling locations, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Next matter is one involving the Art Center Board and some recommendations that the Art Center Board had relative to an RFP in a study. And we welcome Director Caprios here to make his presentation, and we'll have a little discussion about what to do next.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Hovland, and members of the council. This process began back when the City Council asked staff to generate a request for proposal and to receive Art Center Board input, and then return that input to the council for final approval of the request for proposal. We did that. We submitted the RFP to quite a number of consultants that you have a list in your packet. As a result of that, we unfortunately received two submittals. Those submittals have been reviewed and submitted to the Art Center Board for their input, and their recommendations are part of the report and recommendation that is in your packet. What the Art Center Board is proposing, at this point, being that we received only two submittals, is to reevaluate the focus of the study, to maybe narrow the focus, and then rewrite the request for proposal and resubmit. There was lengthy discussion, and I must apologize that the council intended to get to the minutes of the Art Center Board meeting. Michael Frye did do them in time, and I neglected to get them to you ahead of time. I apologize for that. They were done just a few days ago, and was unable to get them to you. But there was lengthy debate and good discussion at the Art Center Board meeting. It wasn't unanimous in the view, but it did pass. They would recommend that you reject the two proposals, narrow the focus, and resubmit. Just as another option, staff, as you noticed, has recommended that another option to just expedite the process. We feel we have two very good candidates. We've had some good input from some Art Center Board members and kind of unsolicited input from Mr. Milligan and Herman Milligan from the Foltman Group. That another approach might be to approach both of these candidates, these submittals, with input from the Art Center Board to serve on a small committee, and see if there's room to negotiate what possibly a narrower focus to bring some of the price down. That would, I believe, would expedite the process, but we certainly stand to do whatever the council would ask of us. I know we have a couple of Art Center Board members with us tonight, as well as our manager of the Art Center, Michael Frye.
All right. Thank you. Member Bennett?
Thank you, Your Honor. I feel really limited in my ability to make, to discuss this without seeing the minutes. The staff report references a motion passed by a majority of board members, but I don't know what that means, and I don't know who they were. I don't know what the specifics of the discussion were. Also, I don't recall that we have had a joint meeting with the Art Center Board in at least four or more years, five years. I recall in 2007 discussing with the Art Center Board the capital needs of that facility, but I don't recall a joint meeting with them since then. And I'm wondering if it would not be timely. I understand we've got a jam-packed schedule, but I'm, with the limited information before me this evening and the fact that we have not been able to confer, discuss things directly with the Art Center Board now for quite some time, I would really appreciate the chance to do that before taking any action.
Other comments? I can comment. I like Member Bennett's idea. We're overdue for a meeting with them, but I'm fairly comfortable with the alternative situation where, because the Art Center Board knows what they want to accomplish, if they want to sit down with those two consultants that they deem to be qualified and try to work out a strategy for narrowing the scope of the work that they're going to do, that they know needs to be done, and then trying to get the price reduced, and then come back to us for approval, I mean, that would be okay with me. That would put the onus on the Art Center Board to take a laboring over here and then come back to the council with an idea based on what they accomplished with the two consultants. Member Sprague?
Mayor, I concur. I looked at both analyses and Member Royquay's, Commission Member Royquay's, and then Milligan. I'm not exactly sure who he is or his connection, but anyhow, I thought that was a reasonable method. I actually thought one of, in my view, reading the RFPs, I thought one of them would work, but the scope was too broad and the price was too high, given that other RFPs for consultant studies of our facilities have come in in that 15 to 20 range. We've got one here at 45. So they need some, a narrower direction. I think Commission Member Royquay had put that in one of his analyses here, might be able to cut back on costs by limiting the legal funding scope and architectural building evaluation component, which you said in the past, we already had a building analysis done a while back that could be incorporated into it. So I would concur with the mayor. I also think that time is of the essence. It's on our work plan to give some clearer direction to our residents as to what the strategic plan will be for these facilities that are being studied. And I think we owe it to them to get the job done in a reasonably timely matter.
Thank you. Member Brendel?
Thank you. I agree. I think both of these, both of the submitters said, "Meet with us, and we'll be glad to discuss the fee." So that's certainly within the realm, but one of them has quite a resume of local organizations that they're familiar with, both city organizations as well as private, nonprofit mostly, I suppose, but maybe some otherwise. But I'm anxious to hear more about what they see, and I think that we've got some talent on the Art Center Board itself that maybe by working with one or both of these organizations to kind of narrow down what the requirements are, it can give our people some direction for what they can do to carry some of this load as well. Because I think we've got some people who can think through this and take direction in some ways from this. But I too think that, I think we have enough to go on here. You know, the contents of the motion, I can kind of guess what it might have been, but to move it forward and not delay it, but at the same time, make sure that we're asking for the right things. So maybe having that small group discussion would help and getting the Art Center Board involved in that.
Just so we're clear here, because I'm hearing things that don't actually fit with the recommendations that I'm seeing in front of me in print. It appears that the Art Center Board passed a motion recommending that the council reject both proposals as too broad, and recommends refining the RFP and reissuing it.
That's what their recommendation.
Right. But the discussion that I've heard about advancing it and time being of the essence and the proposals looking possible, workable, would indicate to me that what is being favored is staff's recommendation that staff work with the Art Center Board, identify key issues, and that staff and three Art Center Boards interview the two firms. So which alternative?
I thought it was an oral alternative presented this evening that wasn't in writing, and that was that some members of the Art Center Board, or possibly all members of the Art Center Board, would get together with these two consultants and try to narrow the scope of the project and then come back to us.
That's on the second page of the staff report.
Right.
That's an alternate recommendation.
The staff recommendation, correct.
That is a staff recommendation.
Yeah. As between the two recommendations, I favor staff's recommendation. That's what I was saying. Mayor, I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, I see that, too.
How is that recommendation with the Art Center Board? Are they okay with that?
I would suggest that at the board, and they voted differently.
Well, I know, but some are here tonight. Are they okay with that recommendation, or would they really prefer to start over?
Would you like to hear from them?
Well, it's difficult to get a sense of what the board thinks, though, without them being able to give you that kind of comment, I think. We can say clearly that a majority of the board does not favor staff's recommendation and wants to reject both of them. And what we're saying is, we would favor an alternate recommendation brought forward by staff to, because time is of the essence and so on, to go back, per his recommendation, and work with the Art Center Board to refine the scope with the two submitters, and then see if we can get an acceptable proposal.
And I have to say, when we have residents walking documents in with five copies for the council, I don't understand why we don't have the minutes in front of us. I just have to say that. I don't understand why we don't have the minutes that pertain to this item in front of us tonight.
The meeting took place two weeks ago, and the minutes were not prepared in time to have it submitted in the packet. And by the time it got to me with what's on the desk, and I'm not making excuses for myself, it's one of those details that didn't get done. It was submitted, but just shortly ago. Was not in time to be submitted in the council packet.
Yes, but it could have been walked in this evening. We could be glancing at it right now and just have a sense of the gist of the discussion.
That's correct. Member Bennett, I apologize for that.
Member Swenson?
Could I suggest sort of a combination of both things? Could I suggest that we reject both of the RFPs as requested by at least a majority of the Art Center Board? However, I think that there were some good ideas sent to us in emails that kind of pertain to what Director Caprios is talking about. Is it possible, Director Caprios, to reject both RFPs, to then rewrite with the help of Art Center? But I want to know that you're going to have a staff member, you are going to be there as you discuss the RFP, because I would like that continuity between Park Board and the Art Center for bringing the scope down. The one that was the least expensive kind of interviewed the art people more. The other one seemed to do some of the work we wanted more, but kind of broadened it out a little bit too much. I don't want to spend $45,000 on this. I might be more comfortable spending 20 at the max. And maybe initially work with the two that you have, and if that doesn't pan out, then resend out the RFP. So it's sort of a combination of all of it together. Is that unworkable? You've got to tell me that, John, because I don't want to make it more of a complicated project than it should be.
Member Swenson, we as staff would be happy to carry out whatever.
I know. I'm saying, phase one, you do the staff recommendation. Phase two, you reject, if the scope can't be narrowed, to the $20,000 ballpark, and then move.
Well, I'd actually reject both of their proposals outright, as the Art Center did, and then go back to them and say, you know, "We'd like to reduce the scope of this. We're looking for..." Because they both said they would work with us on price, so we rejected what they submitted, and then we'd go back to them and say, "Here's the scope." and then we go back to them and say, "Here's the scope. What's your price? And if neither one of those works with the rescoped project, then send it back out."
We'd be most happy to do that.
I don't know. Does that seem reasonable?
It does seem reasonable, and that's not an unusual approach to an RFP process when you get results like this.
And I think we're doing both things. We're rejecting the proposals as the majority of the Art Center Board requested, but we're also listening to the recommendations of several people that I find pretty qualified on the Art Center to at least cull down the scope and ask them for a resubmit.
I think it brings clarity to the existing RFP. We're rejecting it, and then go back to the consultants and see what you can work out.
And if they don't come up with anything that's reasonable based on your new scope and the price kind of guidelines, then send it back out again. I don't know. Does that, I'll put that in a motion if you'd like that.
I think you should put it in the form of a motion.
Okay.
Member Sprague will second it, I think.
I would recommend that we reject the current RFPs, go back and meet with a select group from the Art Center and the Park Board to rescope it. Go back to the two proposals, ask them on a rescope what their price is and their response. If you're not happy with that, then put the RFP back out to the general group.
Point of clarification, you said Park Board. You meant staff?
Yeah. Park Department, sorry.
So you'll accept that amendment?
Yes.
So I second.
I misspoke.
All right. Comment, Member Bennett or Member Brindle?
I understand that this is not a public hearing, but that members of the Art Center Board and the Art Center Acting Director have all stayed through a really long evening. May we have a few minutes to hear from them?
Sure. Michael, you want to comment at all? You need to come up here to the podium if you want to.
Good evening, and thank you. I think the certain proposal is a well-thought-out proposal, and I've spent a little bit of time working with MRAC, Minnesota Regional Arts Council, Minnesota State Arts Board, trying to find other consultants that might be possible entities to work with, and I think staff has sent a really good list of consultants to work with. These are two local consultants. They are very varied. We had a great discussion about the variety of them, and I think the certain proposal is, could be narrowed in scope, and that's my thought.
All right. Good. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. Next matter in front of us is Resolution 2012-46. Hennepin County Administrator Richard Johnson requested at a February 28, 2012 meeting of the Hennepin County Board of Commissioners that Hennepin County cease all court operations at the, what we know as the Southdale Courthouse, commencing September 1, 2012. A resolution was prepared opposing that closure in the City of Bloomington, and our staff has prepared a resolution as well opposing that closure. And Manager Neil, any other things that you want to add?
Thank you, Your Honor. As you can tell by the second whereas, this is a pretty quickly developing situation, and we didn't really have much time to put this together for you tonight, but this is a resolution opposing the closure. It was based off the Bloomington resolution that was adopted by the Bloomington City Council last night. It does contain some, it contains some specific, a couple spots has specific information about our city. And on the back, we recognize that this issue really has been motivated by court safety. We understand that, but we really would like to, if possible, have the county take a slower approach to the subject of closing down this courthouse, as it does make a pretty significant difference in not just how we run our police department, but also in the lives of the people that will have access to the court system through that building.
Thank you.
Can I ask our city attorney a question?
Sure.
Since I go home every night to one of the people listed under the Now There For, number three, and I'm married to the Chief Judge of Hennepin County, would you like me to recuse myself from this? Does that put me in a difficult spot? Because I feel a little bit like I'm in a difficult spot on this one.
If you are uncomfortable, you certainly should recuse yourself. I appreciate the fact you're probably going home tonight, but as far as a legal conflict, I don't think there is one.
Yeah. I don't feel there's a legal conflict, but I have a home conflict, so I'm going to sit this one out. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion on Resolution 2012-46, or is there a motion?
Your Honor, I just wanted to also tell the council that I did have a discussion with Commissioner Callison today about this resolution, forwarded it to her office, so she had a chance to see it, just to make sure that she was comfortable with it. She told me she was, and gave me some input about when they're meeting and what perhaps we need to communicate during these upcoming meetings, one on Thursday and another one next Tuesday. So I just wanted you to know that we have been in contact with our county commissioner and her staff as well on this issue.
Can I ask a question? It says in the Now There For, two, sentence three, cooperate with the Hennepin County Board of Commissioners, county administrator and court administrator to form a task force for the purpose of working out the security issues faced by the Southdale Courthouse. What are some of those security issues that they're facing?
At this time, I can tell you that we don't know any specifics about that, and that's one of the, that's one of the questions that I would intend to ask the Board when we have a chance to meet with them on Thursday.
Just a point of clarification. Does this have anything to do with the service center itself, where you renew your driver's license and you get a passport? Or is it just?
It's a fair, that's a good question, and this resolution is just pertaining to the courthouse. We are aware that the Hennepin County is studying its service centers as well, and so that's on a separate track by a separate group of people, but it is a subject matter they are studying right now, too.
Since I'm not married to anyone in the service center business, I do recollect that they did close the Eden Prairie Service Center a short while ago, so I think the Southdale Service Center is one of the closest ones, at least for that quadrant of our...
Okay. Just an observation, as I wrote to Manager Neil earlier today, I was in Woodbury on Sunday, and they have a new, brand-new building, and it is a standalone service center. So I was surprised to see that, so that when I saw this come across today, I, it just made me think, so.
All right. Further discussion on the resolution? All those in favor of passing, say aye. Don't we have a motion? I thought we had a motion.
Mary has moved, and I will second.
All right. Thank you. All those in favor of the adoption of Resolution 2012-46, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions?
Abstention.
Thank you. All right. Next matter, Manager Neil, is 2012-47.
Thank you, Your Honor. You may recognize this because you approved this item for the first time in a slightly different form on January 17, where the city approved a 10-foot easement from the parking ramp to, into the Jerry's Hardware Site. As they began their project, they really figured out pretty quickly that they needed 12 feet 4 inches, not 10 feet. And so this easement is coming back to you for a new approval for 12 feet 4 inches. That is the, that is the number that they need. They're very confident in that, and we recommend you, we recommend you approve it tonight, and then we will advance this to an HRA agenda for March 20. But if you approve this tonight, we can sign off on the building permit tomorrow, and they can commence their project.
All right. Good. Yes, Member Swenson.
We lost a parking space on the first with, is this?
No, no.
No more parking spaces?
No more parking space, just two feet 4 inches more away.
I'll move it.
Second.
All right. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. All right. Anything else in our, in the dais? Any other communications that we need to be concerned about? Member Brindle.
All right. I have a few things. Dewtown is gearing up a little more every day, I think. Sign boards, we're going to be painting this week, some sign boards that are going to be displayed around the city, and basically, they will give people opportunities to write their thoughts about what does a healthier Edina look like. So the Dewtown staff is organizing people to come and help paint, and I think it's over at Centennial Lake somewhere. So I'm going to go wield a paintbrush tomorrow, and so folks can look for those at the gathering places around Edina, and they will move from school to school, and City Hall, and Senior Center, and Community Center, and those kinds of places, and the library. Marty Mathis of the Bike Edina Task Force, I get these little Facebook updates. He says, there's, and this is actually pretty cool, 30 days of biking. The third year of 30 days of biking begins April 1, and it has one rule: bike somewhere every day for 30 days, around the block, 20 miles to work, whatever suits you, and then share your adventures online, but mostly just bike somewhere. So that follows with Dewtown, but I thought maybe I'd, maybe it's time I pump my bike up and start doing that. I've been going to do that and haven't done it. Tour Day Edina 2012 is gearing up. We had our first organizational meeting for our community bike ride last night on Monday evening, and this year, we are going to have a companion event on Sunday, October 14. Tour Day Edina will be at noon. It'd be a five-mile bike ride, and then we are going to hold an Open Streets event, beginning at 1:00, and it'll go until like 5:00 on that day. And we're deciding right now with the Police Department what street to close. An Open Streets event closes a street or closes a loop, and it's like a great big block party, where you are, anything that doesn't have a motor, so you're on bicycle, you're on skateboard, you're on rollerblades, you're on your own feet, and we'll have some activities and some food, but this was done in Minneapolis on Lindale Avenue, and they had thousands of people. Fargo Moorhead has now done it for three years, and they've just been getting bigger and bigger crowds. So it's a, it's a way to kind of celebrate, celebrate the community. So we're working on exactly the location for it, so we'll keep you posted. And finally, there was, there was the cutest little article in the employee newsletter, which I read, and this little guy says, "We live on Scott Terrace in Edina, and our five-year-old son was wondering if it would be possible to change the name of our street from Scott Terrace to Super Mario Galaxy Street." And I just love this. I mean, it's just very, very down-home and very cute. The parents said, "I told him I would ask the city whether that might be possible and what the process would be to move forward. For my own part, I'd suggest we change the name to Megalodon Shark Terrace." I think that really, either one would really provide some additional curb appeal to the coveted five-to-seven-year-old boy demographic, but I thought that was darling. I thought it was very cute. But it's kind of fun when even the five-year-olds of our city say they want to be proud of their street. Thanks.
Thank you. Member Bennett.
I was very happy to attend the State of the Community address and thought it was a really wonderful, concise way to learn about the school district and the city. I hope that we repeat the evening public event, understanding that with the Chamber of Commerce, it's public as well, but I'd love to see more Board and Commission members come and get some idea of how things interrelate, sort of the big picture, but was very, very pleased and impressed with the presentations, and how do people see the tapes of those?
The State of the Community was videotaped that night and has been airing nearly every day since the day after the event. It's also available online on both our YouTube channel and through Grannis.
Great. Thank you.
Also, I saw a press release about some presentations on how the city operates, Manager Neil and Mayor Hubland. How does someone find out more information about those?
We're working with the group called OLLI, the OSHA Lifelong Learning Institute, and they're the group from the University of Minnesota that's coordinating this event. So they're also coordinating the press for it and the schedule of it, and I can tell you, there's some scheduling issues that they have to work out. So even though you've, you probably have seen some of this in the newspaper already, it will actually be different when the programs get finally scheduled, but it should be in the news, should be in the Edina Sun and also on our website, too.
I think I saw it in the Sun. All right. Great. Thank you. That's all.
Member Swenson.
Yeah. The State of the City was a great event, so enjoyed being there, too. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Just got delivered this American City and County Magazine, City Hall 2.0. It says, "Today, people use internet and smartphone apps to conduct business. They want the same choices when they engage with government." Talked a little bit about M-government before, and I thought this article was interesting. I just wanted to read a little bit. Says, "Access to government drives engagement. The more opportunities residents have to participate in civic activities and discussions, and the more channels available through which they may participate, the better connected they will be to their government agencies and representatives." And that's kind of been part of our entire community engagement strategies that we've been using at events. But it also says down below, "Mobile phone applications can extend outreach to groups that may be difficult to contact, including visually impaired people and those who are hearing impaired. In fact, low-income residents and minorities are twice as likely to use a mobile phone and a desktop computer, according to recent Nielsen data." Thought that was interesting when put together with our data from the Quality of Life Survey that said 21% of people did not have internet access, and therefore, this M-government or mobile government is a way to reach these target populations that we might not otherwise get to. It's also a way to leverage factual data gathering out in the field by residents who are bringing back, you know, various reporting. Some of that, we have a portal on the website where you can do that and report various issues with the streets and so on, but taking a picture with your phone and sending it in would be a pretty efficient way to do it as well. So I hope you'll read this and consider the continued evolution of our technology here, starting maybe with Wi-Fi access at City Hall. I know we talked about that one tonight, so I know it's a low blow, but anyway. Just wanted to use my iPad up here. The second thing is, in the same magazine, it talked about, the report came out from the Tax Foundation for the Best and Worst States for Business Taxes. Minnesota ranks 39th for mature firms and 35th for new firms, but interestingly enough, it ranked sixth for new capital-intensive manufacturing, despite having one of the highest corporate income tax rates in the nation at 9.8%. The operation has a total tax... The operation has a total tax burden fifty-one percent less than the national average, this is capital-intensive, intensive manufacturing, in large measure due to low property tax rates and a modest property tax abatement. Our neighbors in Wisconsin, they got a ranking of thirty-five for mature firms, and four for new firms. They have some pretty generous incentives, including a $6,000 job creation tax credit, and so on. And then Iowa's forty and forty-one, so things to continue to consider at the state level. I, I miss going to this real estate forum for Realtors that St. Louis Park puts on, because I think it's a paradigm we could use in the city as well, and I've talked to Manager Neal about it, and I gave him the packet with the, the seminar outline and so on. But it was held on March 6th, they get continuing education credit, and the seminar goes over, it's basically sells St. Louis Park to the Realtors. Talks about it being a livable community, development updates, park and recreation amenities, neighborhood and public safety, report from the superintendent of the schools, the assessors' report, and then about their city housing program. So, it would be another way to mine some data from these people selling our community on the front lines, so we could get, we could get something back from them as well. So, something to consider, maybe for 2013, because I know our workload is full. I got an email from somebody at the Minnehaha Creek, it said, "Construction underway on innovative stormwater management project." This is for, for Wayne. It says, "The Minnehaha Creek Water District is using, has begun construction in the Tristown on innovative new filter system to improve water quality in Dutch Lake and downstream wetlands. The MCDWD is using a sand iron filter to reduce some monophosphorus that enters Dutch Lake, which is considered impaired for its nutrient concentration. It's a relatively new technique in stormwater management. Just thought you might want to know about it, maybe it's something that would work here. We have impaired lakes right here in our own community." And then, finally, we got a letter from, or did we get a letter from Kim Montgomery? From the, no, we didn't get a letter. I guess she's on the Community Needs Public Realm Working Group, and they had discussed doing a mailer to, within the point seven mile radius of the framework area for the Grandview District project, to try to get people more informed about what's going on. She's been talking to business owners and so on, and has found that people still don't know about what's going on. And one thing that Member Bennett always talks about is everyone in Edina has a mailbox, and so I wanted to have a discussion about possibly considering doing some type of radio mailing before this public comment period is, is over. In addition, I wanted to talk about the next step with the development framework, because the plan that came forward at that planning session was calling for a, a working group to be formed and so on, and we've, we are concerned with time moving this project forward. And, and so, do we need to come up with a, a way for this steering committee in existence now to review some of the issues like height and density, before we move forward with approval of the framework? Rather than approving a framework that allows for yet another stage to take place. So two separate issues, one about the notice area, one about the, the plan going forward. So.
I heard two things on the community engagement website tape, the discussion with the Richmond Hills neighborhood. One was people not aware, but second was a kind of tuning in and out, based on how far along they perceived the process to be. There were people who said that they had been engaged a decade ago or so, when the redevelopment that involved the townhomes, the office building, and the library and Senior Center were built, and that they attended meetings and were into, were aware of different development proposals, and then things sort of happened fast at the end. And so, I think that there is some selective tuning in and out, but I think there probably are also people who, because they live in multi-unit housing, they don't receive a sun current, maybe they don't have internet connection, they still might not be aware. And so, is it a postcard that they're proposing?
That would be the idea, and it's not just the multifamily, I think it's some of the, the tenants as well, in the area who are, you know, signing new leases and have, are unaware, they're not following the paper, maybe they don't get the paper because they're a business. They're, the internet is only a small slice, and they haven't, they're just not tuned in. So again, back to your, your point always about mailed notice. I see Director Benarot chiming in, please.
Thank you. The Communications and Technology Services Department did prepare a postcard that was mailed to all of the business property owners in the area. The intent of that mailing was to let them know where we're at with the project, and to make them aware of your public hearing in April. That same piece could easily be reprinted for an, an additional mailing. However, we have expended all of the, the funds from the grant, so this is not a budgeted item, would likely need to come out of contingencies if you were to, to want to pay for printing and postage for that purpose.
What I would hate to happen is, this framework comes forward, and then down the road, somebody, you know, a neighborhood, whatever comes forward, and they haven't heard about it because they never really received that direct mail piece, that could have easily gone out. I mean, I think in some ways it protects the integrity of the work that's been done to do it. I think it's worth the money to protect the integrity of the process as far as to do it, and say, "You know what, we did everything we could within a certain radius." They're proposing point seven five, but it could be some type of radius, it would include businesses, not just property owners themselves, and it would include renters, as you alluded to, as well. So if it's, if we spend, you know, I don't know how much a postcard is, twenty-five, thirty cents, times a couple thousand people, I think it would be money well spent in the big picture, if that helps us protect the integrity of the process going forward. Because once it's down the road to a public hearing, and we already know that, that, that 's only a tighter radius, and people also like to be involved earlier, because they say now the process is going, and they're right to a degree. At some point, it's gone so far along that the direction is not going to reverse that much on certain key elements, some of which have not been resolved, heightened density, and so on. So that's, that's where they're coming from.
You read the motion?
Yeah, we can, Jennifer and I will talk, we can talk about that tomorrow and, and coordinate that.
Do you think the end point's seven?
I, I would, I would defer to staff. I would talk with the Community Needs and Public Realm Working Group, as long as the consensus of my colleagues is with me to allow for that.
In terms of helping staff define that limit, what would be contemplated for coverage, for instance, for neighborhoods? The city is what, four miles in, in each direction? So if you're going almost a mile out.
I, I played with it a little bit. I have a mapping function on the MLS, and it gets Richmond Hills, it gets Brook, Brookview Neighborhood, you know, it's directly adjacent. It gets actually some of Gulf Terrace Heights and Country, and Sunny Slope, because that's part of that whole zone coming, extending in. And it gets a part, I said Gulf Terrace Heights, and it, and then it gets Richmond Hills.
Does it get through Hankerson, Williams?
Yeah.
Yes, and that's what I meant by Brookview, I'm not sure if that's the right moniker for that neighborhood or not, but, but the wedge between Interlochen and Vernon as well.
Right, and then also Todd Park, does it reach that?
And Todd Park as well, correct. Yep.
Okay, then I think, then I, then I think that probably is a good distance, because it's, it's covering the neighborhoods, I think, that would feel directly impacted, and hopefully will be benefited long-term.
Right. Because you know that the day-to-day lives of that radius will be affected. Yeah. Okay. So then, on the, on the, on the second issue, in terms of the, how this process goes forward, what's the discussion?
You know, it might be easier to ask them to come forward with a height recommendation. It's going to be harder for them to come forward with a density recommendation. Height will automatically dictate density. So I think really it's the height issue, and I think it needs to be clear that they need to vote on it, and we need to see the vote on it, to understand, you know, where they all were. And I, and the minutes from it, yep. And know that there may not be consensus on it.
What would be the problem with going to the chair, ask him, ask him what's the next, what's the next step in his mind?
Well, when we, when we.
Fisher Stockton.
Yep, no, when we sat at that meeting, he wanted, that was one of the things he talked about that they hadn't decided, and that they, that was probably a next step thing. But they ended up throwing a bunch of other things in there that really aren't part of what's going to be efficient in a shorter term. We also don't have funding to go ahead to do any, to do a lot of what they maybe threw into it.
But at this point, at this point in time, when we know that they're going to the Planning Commission, we know they're coming here, I'm inclined to let him kind of finish his work in leading that group.
But in the plan that we would approve, it calls for a twelve-month implementation group, work, you know, to take the next step and answer height and density and financing, and that's what, what we're trying to discuss. Do we want to go that direction? That wasn't in the draft before this one. Or do we want to say, "You know what, we need to resolve some of those issues now," and then take it back to staff and planning and legal, and start to do some real due diligence on the city end? We can't do both necessarily, because they're calling for us to delay it another twelve months.
But is that a subgroup calling for that, or is it the?
It's in the work, it's in the last draft of the work.
Plan.
Of the development framework under implementation. It's page forty-nine.
I have it right here.
Okay, thank you.
And the list is, on, the, the.
Can you read just the whole?
Right.
Okay.
On, step four, initiate a process led by the Implementation Steering Committee to provide direction for key remaining areas of the framework. Remaining key decision points, many of which are intermedi, are interrelated, but all of which must be defined in terms of the approved framework include: transportation elements, density and height, housing affordability, financing, design and development guidelines, and community building. And I agree with Member Swenson that some of those appear to be decision points, and some of those, like financing, I'm not sure that that's really a citizen-led group, but rather market. I know we, TIF, what, it's statutory, it's regulatory, so, but I also agree that there are elements that have been important, they've been contentious, the group has bumped up against them making a decision, and sort of pushed that decision-making going forward. And I think rather than take those decisions away to say, "There is not a year remaining to make the decisions." So anything that you want to be included in recommendations going forward, need to be decided within this, is it a two-month period that remains, or whatever?
Before it comes to us, you mean?
April twenty.
Seventeenth.
April seventeenth.
So, pre-April seventeenth, and they've got, you know, forty days to do that, so. And you, you mentioned today they have a meeting coming up Thursday, so if we.
I mean, they can choose not to talk about the affordable housing, because we actually have affordable housing in our current plan, and we have a recommendation as to what we should try to be working towards from the Met Council. I don't see that, you know, they got really confused in, well, should it be a percentage, or should be a number of units, and it's like, you know.
Lots of minutia.
It was way too much minutia. So, I mean, they can choose to talk about it, but really, the major driving question is height, because height drives density, height will drive financing, height may drive even affordable housing. But until you, until you answer that, and then ultimately, we're going to answer height, because we're the ones that are going to have to forward it to Met Council on a vote.
The consensus, Mayor, that we're trying to reach is to perhaps remove this implementation element from the last draft, and instead say, "Steering Committee, you've got till April seventeenth to finalize any remaining issues," one of which we find to be very important would be height. And come to a decision, provide us with the minutes, and enact, and a real vote, and, and then we'll move it forward that, and, you know, with that context.
I just, I just thought that they didn't need that kind of micromanaging, that they knew they had to do that. From talking to the chair, I think he envisions, when they come to us, some of these decisions are going to have been made.
No.
I think there are people on the body that think they're going to, that there will be another phase constituted, and in fact, that was discussed at the work session last week. There was a contemplation that some people will self-select to continue, and others will self-select not to continue. And I think certainly, we want it understood that there will be community process going forward.
Right.
As designs are proposed, so it isn't an end to all community process, but an idea that's, that important elements would remain unrecommended. I think we're coming to a decision point.
And if you look at the draft, right before this draft, you'll see that it was not in the form of a steering committee, it was just more talked about implementation objectives in general. So you could simply take the last draft, and then say, move forward with any other recommendations you need as a group, now vote on it, provide the minutes, and we'll address those issues going forward, because now it's moving into the planning and legal aspect. The city needs to do its own due diligence.
And the transportation stuff, we really took care of, because we sent it to transportation, because here we were asking for living streets to be incorporated into our town. We felt it was very important that living streets certainly be part of this, and that transportation should have a chance to be able to respond to us as to, you know, what they think of the plan.
It also might be helpful if the Transportation Commission schedules a meeting to discuss the, after they've had a time, a chance to review, and invite that notice beginning to steering committee members, who can then be present and may comment if they choose.
All right. So I'm, I'm, having heard this dialogue, I'm comfortable with the notion that we give them direction to make decisions on things that we think are important, or they think are important, relative to.
But at a minute a moment needs to be height. I mean, they can't, they can't.
By, by April seventeenth. When they show up here, April seventeenth, all that ought to be.
And I'm not looking for unanimity, I'm looking for a recommendation with, of the majority, and that anyone in the minority can certainly.
The rationale will.
Let us know.
If you show it in the minutes.
But I, I think I'm on the same page with the rest of you, we don't have a year to wait to work through this other.
Nor do we have money to fund it. We've already borrowed from contingency to send out postcards.
We've worked those volunteers pretty hard.
Mayor, the, the draft plan said, "Implementation," this is the same section, but different, and it said, "Financial feasibility, feasibility of financing would include, one, projected of anticipated costs," and so on, they go down this list. It basically just states what the, the further objectives are, and doesn't put it in a format of a twelve-month steering committee. So we still have some idea of what the remaining issues are to be addressed.
All right. So you need something in the form of a motion?
No, I think we got that.
All right. I didn't think you did. Okay, good. Thanks for bringing that up. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you. All right. We did the, as folks had mentioned, we did the State of the Community twice, on the twenty-second of February, and again on the twenty-seventh of February. Twenty-second was in front of the, at a, at a monthly chamber meeting, and then on the twenty-seventh here at City Hall. The twenty-third of February was the Connecting with Kids breakfast and their fundraiser, and our own Chief Long got a nice award there, a leadership award from Connecting with Kids. And then, the next morning, I met with some students from Bordeaux, France, some fifth graders, that was a, a nice experience. And on the twenty-eighth of February, I did the State of the Community again to the Coldwell Banker Realtors down on France Avenue South, without the benefit of a PowerPoint. So that was interesting, the old-fashioned way, just talk your way through it. And managed to hold their attention for about twenty minutes or so, with your invisible clicker and invisible screen. At least they didn't have to see me dancing on YouTube, that was, that was the biggest part of it. So, and then last night, I was over at the Community Center, the school district is starting its vision, visioning process, and we, they're on a seven-week effort over there, a lot of folks involved, and I'll be part of that group, working on that school district visioning. And then next Monday, Manager Neal and I have breakfast with Brian Chang, who continues to think we ought to have some sort of a relationship with a sister city in China, and, and off we ought to all go to some sister city, so we keep meeting with him periodically, and, and we don't ever go anywhere, or even really. So we keep meeting with him periodically, and we don't ever go anywhere or even really think about it.
Never going anywhere.
And then next, on the 13th.
Maybe they should partner with Fiji or something. A little more exotic location.
On the 13th is the opening of the batting cage operation there over at the, the crematorium slash batting cage operation. So.
Natural fit.
It was, I went over there Saturday. Was it Saturday? Yeah, late Saturday afternoon, and it is really an astounding piece of equipment they have over there. You look at a screen, they full on the computer, and the, there's a pitcher that appears on the screen. He winds up and throws the ball, comes through a hole in the screen, and it comes at you about 80, 90, 100 miles an hour.
Right. Fun.
And you see that arm come forward, and then it's.
He's really burning it up, huh?
So they've, they've got quite an operation over there. They say that it might be one of the finest batting cage operations in the, in the United States, so, right here in Edina. And then we've got two mileage-based user-fee presentations next week with Humphrey. And then on the 19th, we have a meeting with the governor with all the MLC mayors. So we'll let them know the legislative concerns that we have. And that's it for me. Manager Neil.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. I'll try to be brief. But we have reached, well, we have reached a, an agreement, a tentative agreement with Local 49 on their two-year contract that was approved by their membership today. That will come back to the council for a review and approval on March 20th. Local 320, the Teamsters, police officers have also, their, their union stewards have agreed to our offer, and they are voting on it right now. So that, it's entirely possible that that, that group may also approve a contract offer, and we'll be presenting both of those to you at the March 20th meeting. Lisa Schaper's done a great job on keeping those issues moving. We have a town hall meeting. I'll just, I see it's on the schedule, but just to give some voice to it here at the, at the meeting, on Saturday, April 14th, from 10 to noon at the Senior Center. And we'll be doing more publicity about that. We kicked off our, kind of, our query into our street reconstruction finance policy earlier this week. Karen and Wayne and I and John Wallen visited with some consultant folks who were kind of wrapping. I think we gave them some good ideas about wrapping their arms around the project and giving us some help with that, so that's exciting. Our Simon discussions of, we believe, have yielded a tentative agreement with Simon Properties that we'll be bringing to the council as well later in April, as there's a public hearing that comes with that, that has a 30-day notice attached to it. And I'll be giving the council a further update about that at the March 20th meeting. Attorneys for the two parties are working together on a, on a final draft, and as soon as we've got that ready to go, we'll share it with council members and then schedule a work session to talk to you about it in some more detail. And that's all that I, that's all that I've got.
Good. Anything else for anyone? All right. We stand adjourned.